Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council. Today is Monday, April the 17th, 2023, and the time is 7:02 PM. Before we call this meeting to order, please can we have prayer? Reverend Williams, please.
Let us pray. Oh God, we come all the way, but leaning on you have blessed and love. Fathers, we gather here together, bind us together with love, unity, and strength. If we conduct the business of the city, make this, make this a true big city of love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All rise, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Of course. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Councilmember, uh, excuse me, Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Washington.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Howard.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
You have a full house.
All right, moving right into approval of the agenda with the addition of item D. We're gonna omit items.
Omit all items. D and add.
Oh, it's gonna be, okay. We're gonna, yep, so we get, we're just gonna add, we're gonna actually add or replace that one. So D, it should be A, B, C, D, and it should be Stoman Daycare SLU. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, just a good question. So A, B, C, and then D, what's being removed, I'm sorry?
E's.
The actual item E is being removed.
Yeah, shouldn't have been.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Ayes have it, motion carries. More writing to presentations, please. Tony.
Evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of Inglewood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have a presentation on RoboCall. This is a platform that believed Councilman Chisholm put in place back in April of last year. Tony, my first time, over the IT department, me and my team, we evaluated three different companies. Code Red was a company that Jerome Bibbins, Chuck Hubbard, and Chief Chuck Hubbard and Chief Ratliff, they all agreed that this was the right platform. We're gonna have a brief demonstration talking about some of the technologies that this platform can provide.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me, citizen of Inglewood as well. My name's Pete Applegarth. I flew up from Florida today to talk to you a little bit about our Code Red solution. Give you a quick background on our company, and then I can give you an explanation of the service, kind of how it works, and then open it up for questions. So, company name is On Solve. Our product is Code Red. Been in operation for over 25 years, keeping cities, counties, villages, states, all across the country, safe, alert, and informed. Currently nationwide, we work with more than 10,000 communities. FEMA has our services in place, and anyone, maybe for you on the fire and police side, if you've heard of the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, we launch all of their campaigns. And in our company's 25-plus-year history, we found over 10,000 missing children nationwide. So it's a really neat service. I will basically give you a quick overview, and then we can open it up for questions. So, communities primarily use our service to communicate with the public. And that's primarily for emergency situations, but also general notifications. Anything going on in the city, Summer Fest, special events, programs, Parks and Recs alerts, come out and vote, don't forget to register to vote, things like that. So it's used for a whole lot of different things. It's a great way to reach citizens, but also first responders can use this as a tool as well. So you can set up groups for all city employees, fire, PD, all of your various departments. And it's a great way to quickly record a message that you can send out to landlines, cell phone, text, and email alerts, so you can very easily keep your staff informed, as well as the citizens. A lot of communities up north tend to use it if you're having a snow day. Quickly send out an alert to everyone, let them know we're closing down City Hall. Don't come to work, work remotely today. Or just to put out staff meetings, overtime shifts, special announcements. It's been used for just about anything you could think of. I will go to the next slide here, and this kind of just discusses some of the different common use cases nationwide. Chemical spills, hazmats, police activity, severe weather warning, obviously, missing persons, evacuations, lockdowns, power outages. If there's an issue with the water, Flint came on board after they had their water emergency there. So they have the system in place. If there's something going on, they can call everybody and let them know there's been a main break, or there's been a contamination. Or maybe just put out the annual water quality report, something like that. Obviously, it's used a lot for public works notifications, road closures, street closures, repairs, things like that. Pandemics, obviously, it's been used quite a bit over the past year. We have here first responder, we talked about that a little bit. And then, so those are primarily kind of the emergency use cases. But again, communities use this a lot to let people know about special events, programs, festivities, things like that. So those are kind of the main use cases. How does it work? So authorized city of Inglewood employees, maybe it's the mayor, council members, fire chief, police chief, director of public works, Parks and Rec. The system is set up for them, they can very easily activate it. There's a few different ways that it can be activated. So you can pull out the phone in your pocket, say, I need to quickly call all employees, talk into the phone, send out a message to all the landlines, cell phones, maybe send a text and an email. There's another way where you just simply go online. Go online, open up the interface. You can simply go in and say, let's call the whole city. Put out a general announcement or emergency announcement. We also have a mapping interface. Open up a map, it's gonna bring up a map of the city of Inglewood, and we can say, okay, let's call this one street, and let them know some work crews are gonna be in there today and doing some repairs in the area. Or let's call this one neighborhood, there's been a missing person, let's call the one mile radius. Record a message, landline, cell, text, email, there are a lot of different ways you can send it. Everybody in that targeted area is getting that alert simultaneously, and they know exactly what's going on. Also, maybe if you're in a pinch, internet's down, there's been a big winter storm. You don't have internet. You can also call us, we've got a 24/7 network operations center, you can call us, you're gonna get a live person. You can say, we're having an emergency here in Inglewood. This is the message we need to get out, and we have trained operators that are gonna help you communicate with your citizens, even though you may be down. Those are kind of a few different ways that it's activated. And these are just some different delivery channels. So basically, the system can contact staff and citizens, just about every type of technology you could think of. Primarily, though, our communities just send out messages to landlines, cell phones, texts, and email alerts. Those are kind of the most effective. There's a lot of different ways, you can see here how you can send these alerts out. Questions?
For Council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I was gonna ask, the first question is, how does Code Red receive the data? Is it data that you collect from public record and input into the system, or do citizens have to sign up?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's really one of the most important things. You have to have data in there to make it an effective system. So it's kind of both of those. So we work with a lot of data providers out there. Typically, when we deploy this for a city, we'll have at least a telephone record per household. It's naturally compiled consumer credit information, just kind of Yellow Page listings, White Page listings. So on average, we'll have a telephone record per household. That could be a landline or a cell phone. So we kind of put that into the system as a baseline, a foundation of information, so you can start using it from day one. But additionally, any data that the city has can be incorporated into this. So you have your own water department, you have your own billing solutions, you probably have utility billing data, that will have a connection address, and maybe you have a name and a phone number tied to that. So you can send us that billing data, and we can integrate it into the system and layer it into the data that we already have in there. And then additionally, this is a partnership, we help your, help your community promote it. So we've got all sorts of great resources. We have sample water bill inserts, posters, banners, sample, sample template signup forms. So you could have, you could have flyers here at City Hall, or at the fire, or the PD, or maybe you're having a special city event, you could have some signup forms. So we have a lot of good stuff to help you get the word out there. And then we invented the opt-in process. So we're gonna give you a link that you can put on the main city website. We help you promote it, and your citizens can go onto the website, they can put in their name, maybe they'd like to put a work address, a home address, sign up their family members. They can pick and choose the different types of alerts they'd like to receive. So when somebody signs up, they're automatically gonna go in the database to receive emergencies. As an example, you could have different alert-type categories. So it might be winter storms, notifications by Parks and Rec, special events, summer programs. You could have a dozen different alert categories, maybe the city newsletter or something like that. So when a citizen signs up, they're automatically included for the emergency calls, and then they can pick and choose different areas of interest. So maybe you have a thousand people that sign up who would like to receive city newsletter. You can target it, send it to them, and maybe not necessarily spam others that may not want that type of information. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that opt-in, and there's also one more way. So people can simply, from their phone, send a text message. Some people call this system Code Red in their communities, other communities make it their own and kind of brand it, so maybe it's, maybe you call it Alert Inglewood. So when you roll this out, you can tell your citizens, hey, take a second to go online and sign up so we're sure to reach you in an emergency, or we can tell you about different events going on in the city. Go online and sign up, or simply write from your mobile phone, text, Alert Inglewood. And they can send a message right from their text, and they're included in the system.
I'm glad you, the presentation, everything that you divulged is incorporated in that, because when the policy that we voted on and it was drafted, that wasn't, you know, my intent. And specifically, different things you stated, those different filters and stuff like that, that was the type of accessibility that I was hopeful that we could have as a municipality. Wasn't sure, that's why IT really got tied in and involved, but it wasn't sure. We possess that technology with our systems, which would have been great to save us, you know, in any way, shape, or form. However, don't know if we always necessarily possessed the manpower, like you talked about, the call center and things of that nature. And I guess to the mayor, I know we do have See Click Fix in place, and we've talked about this before in the budget. I would just ask, you know, if this is something we switch to, and I'm glad both public safety officials and Director Bibbins was involved with this, and they're giving a thumbs up, because if we do go to this, it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, that this could take the place of See Click Fix and do a more exponential job.
Correct.
With communicating with the citizens. And I liked the part two where he said that it will call and text. So the text to cell phones, but it'll call the home phones, because we know in the city of Inglewood, we have a populace of residents that are underserved with receiving the communication. And just so you know too, once some people start bragging, if we were to get this, about they got a call from the city about that water main break, and others ain't signed up, they'll sign up on their own, we ain't gotta solicit.
Yeah, that's a great point.
All right, well, thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah.
Mr. Chisholm.
Yes, sir.
Just, when he may mention about, you know, the budget, the budget aspect, what, what will it cost?
Go ahead.
Turning that up here. So there are a couple of different options. We have two options, and it just depends on how you plan on using it. So we have some communities that say, we're only going to use this for emergency situations. We're only going to push the button if it's something that's impacting personal life or property. There's criminal law that needs to go out. We've got a missing person, there's a fire, a gas leak, a chemical spill. If that's the intended use case for the city, our unlimited emergency option would be 5,500 annually. So you can use it as much as you need for anything impacting personal life or property. And that could be a road closure too. You might have some people out there doing repairs, directing traffic, you gotta let people know, don't speed into the area. But as an example, you couldn't call everyone and say, we're having the Summer Fest, or something like that. The city newsletter, kind of those basic general community alerts, things, Parks and Rec, those types of alerts, that wouldn't be covered under this plan. So there are some communities that do only push the button if it's an emergency situation. Many other communities see the value that, you know, this is a very important community tool. We can use this to let those citizens know about all sorts of different things. So then, we have our fully unlimited option, which is 8,400 annually. So you can use it as much as you want for those emergencies and those general non-emergency campaigns. So those are the two options.
And just for a point of reference, See Click Fix has cost us about 8,000 a year right now.
Now, with See Click Fix is that it's the community saying that they're inputting what they saw. But opposed to this, would the community have that?
Yeah, that's a good question. There is a back and forth. So this, that's a good point to mention. So this isn't just a one-way push of information. You can get real-time feedback from your employees and your citizens. So you can target alerts to your districts, to your neighborhoods, you can use it to survey and poll. Maybe there's an event, there's an emergency, you can launch calls into an area, and you need assistance in this evacuation, something like that, yes or no. You can do very detailed survey and polling through email and text. So it does have that kind of two-way component, so you can get important feedback from your citizens and your employees.
So for instance, just sake of an example, there's a pothole on such-and-such street, and you can input that into the system and get feedback.
Now, you could send out a message, and you could pull that free-form text back in, and now the authorized user or city official could go in and see that response. See Click Fix, I believe it allows you to take a picture of something and send it in. So they wouldn't have that functionality, but you could launch out, and citizens or employees could respond back in without the picture piece. So it is a little bit different than that service.
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know you spoke about you can actually go onto the website and then be able to click and choose what you actually wanna receive. Now, how does this work for our seniors that are on landlines, who may not use the internet?
Yeah, yeah. So we have a lot of great marketing materials. So we have sample signup flyers that you could have at city offices. If you do mailers, I know you probably do mailers for like billing, we could put together a little community packet and send it out with the water bills, send information out to the community. At those special events, a lot of times, our customers will set up a little kiosk, computer and a wireless air card, and as they tell citizens about it, they can sign them up very easily on the fly. Oftentimes, like at the public library, click doing, you know, you can open up a computer there and have some information on it, people can go online and sign up. You could also publish a number, just tell your citizens, call this number if you need help, getting included, if you wanna be included in the Alert Inglewood. So you could have, they could call in here, maybe to an administrator, and they could quickly log them and take down their information and sign them up on the fly over the phone. So there, there are a lot of different options.
Okay, and that's included with the 8,400?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead, Councilman Watson.
Okay, hello. What's the turnaround time for these notices? Like, when you know something's happening, you send it? How quickly will the citizens get that information?
Yeah, that's a great question. Inglewood's population is about 25,000, so you probably have somewhere around 12,000 households, so we might have 12,000, 15,000 numbers. If you're calling the entire city, 10 to 15 minutes.
Is it turnaround?
Yeah. Usually, when there's an emergency, you're not necessarily alerting the entire community. Sometimes it's a more targeted area, it's this neighborhood, or it's a half-mile radius, or maybe you're only calling a few thousand records. If that's the case, it's almost instant. And the text and the email alerts, they all go out simultaneously. So the voice calls, they take a little bit longer, maybe 15 minutes to call the whole city, and that's not a restriction of Code Red. We have the capability to do millions of calls per hour. But there's a, there's a local network here that can only take so many phone calls at a time. So that's one important thing. When we bring our communities on, we like to do test calls. Let's launch out a promotional call, roll out Alert Inglewood, tell all the citizens about it that are already in your database, let them know what it is, why it's important, how it'll be used. Tell your friends and neighbors to go online and sign up. And after we kind of do that test, that first call with you, we can see exactly how many phone calls can come into this community simultaneously. But I would imagine it would be about 1,500 to 2,500 telephone calls per minute is about the average. So it's very quick.
Okay, so what, is there some suggestion as to the length of these messages we're sending out? Because, you know, Inglewood likes to talk.
Yeah.
And if we have someone who's putting this in, and it's a 15-minute soliloquy?
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah.
So is there a suggestion or training too, as to the length of these messages and the specifications? You know, like?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, very good questions. Yeah, we've been doing this for 25 years. We have emergency management directors, 911 directors. We have a lot of great people that have written some really great policies, which I'll be able to share with the city, standard operating procedures that we can help you put in place for the use of the service. Also, we have best practices that we share with the customers. When we bring you on board, you have a project manager that shares these best practices with you. They share things like maybe the six key elements you wanna include in the message, the date, the time, what's going on, any action that might need to be taken, kind of, so you make sure you're hitting all those six things. So we have lots of great use cases and things that we're gonna be able to provide you based on our experience, you know, doing this for 25 years.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's all part of it, and part of the onboarding.
Now, I'm not techy, but I have a Stephen, everybody knows that. Is this difficult for the older population to use? Because a lot of them, you know how people are, once they got onto something, that's the way they wanna stay, they don't wanna change. Is this something that we could do to make it attractive to?
Yeah, yeah. So now, are you talking on the citizen side or for?
Citizen side.
Citizen side, yes, yes. It is, a very large amount of the community will already be included in the database. So when you launch out a call, their phone's gonna ring.
Okay.
And what's nice is we can actually brand and customize those phone calls. So we can put in the, you can make the caller ID, it can be a city of Inglewood number. So if it comes up on caller ID, it's gonna say city of Inglewood, they know that you can answer that. They pick it up and they say hello, might be the mayor's voice, director of public works, director of Parks and Rec, and it's gonna play the entire message for them. They can hit a button if they need to replay the message. If their phone gets disconnected, or they drop the call and they're on a cell phone, they can call back the number and retrieve the message. So it's real, real easy on the citizen side. And we've made that citizen opt-in registration process very easy too.
Okay.
Another nice, a lot of communities also will promote this in their senior centers, have some signup forms, have somebody there that will share information, give them a flyer, talk to them about what it is, why it's important, and can help sign them up there on the fly.
Now, should we opt into this, what are, what are we looking at as a up-and-running time?
On average, I would say about a month. Now, we've had to move very quickly. We, LA County had some big wildfires, we had them operational in a couple hours. I was working with a lot of communities in New England when Hurricane Irene was headed their direction. We had about 12 communities up and launching calls the same day. So we can go very fast, but to get it fully set up and deployed, to train all the city personnel, do a good promotional campaign, teach the citizens about what it is, why it's important, get them to sign up, I would say about a month.
Okay. Now, these prices you quoted, do they, are they annually go up type, and in what increments?
Yeah, so it is an annual cost. The standard agreement is about three years. We can do a one-year, we can guarantee the pricing for multiple years. I've been in the company now for 16 years, and in that time, I've seen the pricing go up two or three times. So it's, if it were to go up, it would likely be small. The two price increases I've seen have been like five, six percent.
Okay, so this price you're quoting for everything, we can opt in for a certain amount of years to maintain that price for those number of years?
Exactly, ma'am. You can say, let's, let's do this for a three-year term, it's guaranteed.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm through.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you for the questions.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I was just gonna say, I think it's something we should explore as far as what the terms are with transitioning from See Click Fix to Code Red. And I know we already know the tentative costs, we know what the features are that are involved with both. And I think we just need to revisit the opt-out clause with See Click Fix and/or when the contract expires. Just because it sounds much more towards what I was aiming at when we drafted that policy in the request for council action versus what a regular RoboCall would do. So I'm happy with what I've heard here, and again, like I said, just exploring, just look at the two. Of course, we can also ask Mr. Green to tap in on the treasury side as far as the cost analysis, and just do a compare and contrast in the pros and cons between the features and the cost, and how this would really benefit service to community. Because roughly, how many people we got signed up on See Click Fix?
I think it's about, gotta be about 2,200, something like that.
Oh, wow, and that's been since its inception in the city, so.
Since its inception.
Yeah, okay, so.
It's been a long time.
Okay.
We had it for at least five years, at least.
So I'll just put it out there on the tech side, whatever is needed from me, I'm willing to help out and help continue pushing this until we see where we're gonna go.
I'll stand behind Steven and Nutt.
It'll be my lead. I spoke too soon.
You can chair that committee.
Oh, great.
So of course, we'll, of course, have David weigh in as it relates to the contract as a whole, and then look at See Click Fix and what we have with them, and of course, with our IT team, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, so part of the training, obviously, they'll come out and they'll do all the demonstration, but they're also gonna train us as the IT department, and we can individually continue to train throughout the year, so we don't have to necessarily rely on the manufacturer, but we'll hold them accountable to whenever they, you know, the deliverables and the spoke of work, that's part of our existing contract. So it's more different if it was a parent company or a phone company. So just wanted to add that in, so you have an additional support with the IT.
Well, I'm glad Mr. Mayor didn't get up there and say, we don't want Councilman Chisholm on this committee. Thank you, that's a man.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman, for initiating.
No, I'm glad he didn't get up there and say that.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, no, you know.
No, no, you didn't say that at all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Chisholm, for your issue.
No, I was actually really happy to see this. I don't know if you spoke about this, but people being alerted by their native language, because everybody doesn't speak English.
That's right.
So I really, I love that, I wanted to just put that out there.
Yeah, check out, if you have a minute sometime, check out Detroit 365. You can go to their website, and you'll see Detroit 365, that's actually Code Red, they use our service. And I think they have the multi-language translation, so you can see what that looks like, how a citizen can select the language they'd like to receive their alerts in.
That's great.
Detroit.
Yeah.
Yes.
Detroit 365.
They branded it, they call it Detroit 365. And also, as far as the data, I would say we probably have 10,000 to 13,000 telephone records for Inglewood from day one, and then we help you build that. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much, everyone, I appreciate the opportunity.
We're gonna be moving pretty quickly on this, Councilman, so, you know, with your lead, you know, of course, we'll send it, David has the information already, but we'll get to See Click Fix contract, and then you guys can do the comparables and bring it back to council, so we can have some action on it.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll go at your pace, all right? Good, that's, I'm great, all right, then, moving right along. All right, Chair-recognized State Rep. Dylan Wigella with the update from Lansing. Welcome, sir.
Thanks for having me, hello, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Dylan Wigella. In my first term as state rep representing District 26, which is new, because we just reorganized the whole state, so it's Garden City, Inglewood, Southeast Westland, and Northeast Romulus. So first off, thanks for having me up here, and I wanted to be quick. I have, we've been moving at a lightning pace in Lansing. Honestly, we've never seen anything like this, I think, in 40 years. And under the Speaker Joe Tate, we are starting to really get some good priorities done. So the big five that we've had in the last month or so is we've repealed Right to Work, which is something that's been a long time coming. I serve on the Labor Committee, and I'll tell you, we have a lot more coming in the labor sphere. I was, have a union background, and I am just excited to put workers first in this state. Secondly, we restored prevailing wage to projects in the state of Michigan, which will ensure that we have, you know, workers that are paid what they deserve, and to make sure that we have projects done right. Another thing that went through the Labor Committee. And then, these three are a long time coming. We have three commonsense gun legislation pieces that passed in the last month, which is universal background checks in Michigan. Essentially, we changed the language from pistol to firearm, to be inclusive of all weapons, of all guns, I should say. Then, we also have safe storage laws, which apply to when you have minors in the home. It's essentially to make sure that our weapons are locked up when minors are present or going to be present. And lastly, our red flag laws, where somebody, if somebody has mentally unstable or there's a threat of violence, in conjunction with a court, a warrant can be issued to temporarily remove guns from the home.[1784.15] uh, to temporarily remove guns from the home, and there's a process, uh, for getting those guns back. A lot of these are very complicated, and I'm giving you the, like, very brief introduction of these. Uh, I would love to, if if the council would like, uh, come back and and give a detailed presentation if that's something that the community would like. Um, and lastly, we, uh, from my office, we're trying to do something new that I don't think has really been done from this position, and it's it's getting the community organized for all four cities. Um, and I would love to come to more council meetings, but the problem is every city has the council meetings on Mondays at seven o'clock, so do all of the school board meetings. Uh, and luckily, a lot of library board meetings are on different times, but some of them are also on Monday. But what we've done is, and I hope that you have all received communication on this, is we've created a community advisory council. Um, we've had two meetings so far, so who's been invited has been council members, mayors, uh, school board members, uh, library board members. I do not have the contacts of everybody yet, but I am slowly getting to, uh, know more and more of our community leaders. But long story short, we've had people from Garden City, Inkster, Westland, and Romulus at every meeting, and last meeting, we had a council member from each, uh, meeting, council member Chisholm was there with us. Um, and we are starting to grow. We went from five people to, I think we had fifteen last time, and our next one is this Saturday in Romulus at the Nest, and we've been going from city to city with the one goal and one purpose. You know, we might not all agree with everything that happens in Lansing or everything that happens on our councils, but I think everyone who's involved in public service is trying to make the community better, even if we are not on the same page on every single thing. In my, my, from my perspective, I think we are stronger together. And I don't know the last time that we've had members of Garden City and Inkster work together on things or Romulus and Westland, um, but it it's it's starting to happen, and I look forward to building that communication network with you all and invite you all to these meetings. And, uh, my office is just a phone call away, and that goes to everybody in this room. Uh, we have very experienced staff in Lansing, and, uh, we've been helping people get bridge cards back. We've, we've been helping, uh, with all these other issues and so forth, and, um, that's what we're here to do. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Oh, and one last update that I'm really excited about is, uh, I introduced my first bill last week, uh, and it's a bill to cancel the Inkster school debt. I feel very confident, and I know the the Senator, uh, Paul Henke has talked about this as well. Um, but I've talked to the chairs of both appropriations committees for school aid, I've talked to the Speaker of the House, and I have, um, good reason to believe this is something that will happen this year, and one of the things that I hope to from my office facilitate is community conversations of what's next, because canceling the school debt is one thing, but as you all know, the city of Inkster has four public schools, several different charter schools for a six-by-six square mile city, uh, and that is just not okay for our kids. And that's not something for me, someone who lives in Garden City, to decide, but I hope to, uh, hold town halls, have that discussion, because, uh, Inkster's not the only city in the state that has dealt with these policies that are leading to districts being dissolved and being underfunded. And we're working with, uh, the Speaker and other members, Brenda Carter, out of, uh, Pontiac, to look at what can we change in terms of policy to make sure that this doesn't keep happening in our communities? Um, because it it it's an injustice for a school, uh, district to close and a community to lose their local control, of not just schools, but also cities. So, are there any questions for me?
Question, councilman, please.
Yep. I was just, thank you, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna ask, could you state your, uh, email and phone number on the record for those who are viewing virtually?
Yes, so, uh, my email, uh, in Lansing is, uh, Dylan, D Y L A N, Wegela, W E G E L A, at house dot M I dot gov. Uh, in terms of a phone number, I don't know if I have that, I don't think I have that one memorized yet, but I promise you all this, if you Google my name, uh, I'm the only Dylan Wegela in the entire world, which is a really weird thing, so it's really easy to find me. Um, and I'm sure of at least, I don't know, ten people in this room have my personal number, so, uh, you know, feel free to reach out at any time, I I try to get back to anybody, uh, who reaches out. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
And and Rep. Dylan, um, what what's the next meeting date?
For the community advisory council?
Yes.
It's gonna be Saturday from eleven AM to twelve PM, which is also, uh, I know in Inkster there's gonna be an expungement fair at that time as well. Um, but so I'm gonna be at that in the morning, but the the meeting starts from eleven AM to twelve PM. Uh, it's the fourth Saturday of every month, and we usually send out communication quite regularly, but it's gonna be at the Nest in Romulus. And, um, if you need, uh, more information on that location, um, let me know and we'll get that to you.
Where about in Romulus?
Sorry, one more time?
Where about in?
Uh, it's at the Nest, uh, I can send you the address, I we're, because this meeting's for local leaders and organizers, I I don't want to say it, uh, publicly, the actual address, but.
All right.
Cause, yeah, yeah, cause it's invite-only for these. We have, we have coffee hours all the time, we had a coffee hour, uh, here at the library last week, so.
Mr. Chair, I did pull up the phone number, he said Google, so I did it real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it's not the old number that I memorized, but it's five-one-seven-three-seven-three-three-eight-one-eight.
Thank you.
Five-one-seven.
Make sure y'all call him twenty-four-seven, leave voicemails and all of that.
Absolutely, uh, we we will get back to you, I promise you that.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, councilman.
Okay, do the chair, I was inquiring, uh, Councilman Chisholm has brought this up before about not only does the school debt need to be expunged or written off, but also we lost a lot of buildings, and there's some things, so did your bill include anything about the restoration? Because some of those buildings were in good shape, they could have been used for community centers and things of that nature. And certain, we still have one building that they gave to Garden City that's still here that we're paying for and things like that. So does your bill include any type of remedy for that?
At at this point, the this bill does not, most likely with the way that the Legislative Service Bureau works, so need to be another bill. That is something that we are certainly looking into, because not only, um, has there have citizens been paying taxes on a school district that doesn't exist. Uh, the districts that are servicing Inkster kids have not been receiving those local millage tax dollars for the last decade. So I think something that we should begin to talk about is districts like Romulus, Taylor, Wayne Westland, Westwood, uh, districts that have taken students from where Inkster Public Schools was, uh, have essentially been underfunded for the last decade. So how can we make sure that the community is made whole? Uh, and also, I think the discussion needs to kind of shift to, after the debt is canceled, okay, well, how do we fix the injustice of the last ten years, right? What is the future for Inkster and Inkster schools look like? And I think that's something that we hope to engage the community on, and I think there's a lot of discussion to be to be had there.
I'd just like to clear one thing, cause I'm even, we had to go out to Wayne County, uh, Risa. I would like to know, when the, when the, when this, when the Inkster Public School, School Board Members was resolved, what happened to the money that they had in the bank? Okay? Uh, you know, we really need to find out, what did they do with it, okay? Because they 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 had received some money out of New York, and it was put into the bank, okay? And to tell me, the governor just closed and took the money and did whatever he wanted to do with it, okay? And 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 to me, I I don't think he had that, he should have had that kind of power to do this, that, okay? And I don't know what they did with the, uh, former person they had over, uh, Wayne County Risa, uh, Chris, but I'd like to know where he's at now, you know, if you ever run into him, because it was something when he told the people in there that he he was not being interested, he was not going up into higher hikes, but then, uh, he turned on us, okay? And let me say this, Wayne County Risa was established just for poor school districts and and low-income school districts like Inkster, okay? And then turn around there, uh, talking about giving money to Taylor School District, okay? Which they, uh, what they call it, independent school system? You see what I'm saying, take all our kids and put them over there in in independent school system? Okay, that was enough to bankrupt us then, okay? So I'm just saying, some things need to be checked out, and the mayor, him and I have been talking, and we're talking about going to Risa, okay? Because why have Risa out there paying all this money, okay, to protect poor school districts like Inkster? And then you turn around there and, uh, you you let the governor and Attorney General do whatever they want to do, okay? But then it went back, and but then, you know, you talk about state representatives, state representatives sit right there and went along with them changing the state law, okay? Because they knew good and well, if they sit there and kept it like it was, Pontiac was gonna be included. And ain't nowhere in the world y'all gonna sit there and tell the people that 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 they were going to dissolve Pontiac School District and send them kids to, uh, Farmington Hill and and Bloomfield, okay? So that's why they got the state representative to turn, change the law from twenty-five hundred to twenty-four hundred, okay? So it it, you know, then when we talk about all of this, but then you got to remember one thing too, we have to go back to Wayne County Risa because just in fact, okay, say, say you forgive the debt, okay? But heck, half of that, over half of the debt wasn't what, wasn't Inkster's debt, okay? They come in there, tow down the schools, who gonna, who gonna cover all of that, okay? And what I'm trying to say is this, okay? Who, when you dissolve, you forgive the debt from Inkster? Who gonna pay the money that we gotta pay over in Taylor and Rum- Rum- the School District in Westland?
So, uh, we've been asking those questions, and I I don't have an answer to all of your questions right now, but the one I I can give you the answer to is, right now, where Inkster Public Schools is, uh, residents are paying the maximum of, I believe, is thirteen mils for property taxes. Uh, I believe like Romulus is a district, for example, has eight mils of property tax. So those mils, instead of going to Wayne Risa, who's the fiduciary of the debt right now, uh, would then go to the school district, so it would lower, uh, the 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 property tax rate for residents. But I think most importantly is the property tax dollars would actually service the kids it's intended to, right? Um, and that's something that we've, we've been missing, and I I think you make a lot of good points. There's, especially in Lansing, uh, we, for the first time, have Democrats in control of all three branches. Um, all of the the dissolutions, uh, in the past in the emergency manager laws were put in under Republican leadership. Um, so I think there's a chance to to change those laws, to find something that works better, but also to identify public ed policy that is leading to, uh, districts such as Inkster, Benton Harbor, Ipsy, Detroit, Highland Park, the list goes on. Um, what, we we, at the end of the day, canceling the debt is a, a bandage to a bigger problem, which is we have success systematic inequities in our education system that is leading to these problems. Um, and I think through telling the story here in Inkster, we can use that as a way in Lansing for people to understand what happens to a community when we don't address these problems, and then in turn, find policy solutions. Um, that's very complicated and that's gonna take time, but, uh, as a former educator, that's something I'm really interested in, because it is not fair to the the kids and the residents of our districts, uh, that we do not receive the same property taxes that they do in Livonia, Plymouth, Northville, um, and this is true through all of our district.
One one more little thing I want to leave with you, while while you're negotiating, as I hear. You 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 got, you got to watch one thing, okay? See, first of all, the debt, the biggest debt, school debt that we're paying now isn't, what, it didn't even supposed to be put on the residents, it was the business tax, okay? But they put it on the residents, okay? And what I'm trying to say is, even though you get up there in Lansing and y'all forgive the debt, okay? Well, common sense will tell us right now, the debt that we're, that that we're paying is less than Taylor School District and Rumulus. So now, who's going to the jet, make them adjustments? Are we gonna go in here and say, well, we're gonna forgive the debt and then go back paying more to these reg- other school districts?
So the, right now, the the property taxes are at the maximum level of mils, uh, to pay off the debt in Inkster for Inkster Public Schools. Romulus and Taylor actually have a lower mils, so it would be a reduction in property tax from, from what I understand.
You say Rumulus got what?
It, their their mils that they leverage on students who go to Romulus pay less than the maximum. So, uh, if you were to cancel the school debt, uh, residents would see a reduction in, uh, the mils that they were paying on their homes.
So I'd like to see that in writing, I I would, I definitely, I would like, I like, I like to see that, okay? When we talk about that, you are state rep, I would like to see that.
This is what.
Once they forgive the debt, you said, and we we're gonna be moved over to Rumulus, Taylor, them other school districts, okay? And you say that our taxes are gonna be paying lower?
For for, well, for places where Inkster Public Schools was, right? It would, cause right now they're on maximum mils to pay off the remaining school debt through Wayne Risa. Moving over, they, uh, and then I think there could be a legal debate on this as well, is what Wayne Risa was saying.
Because when they, when they, when they, when when they take, take the the military money they got now, when it, if they dissolve that, we're gonna pay the the amount that 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 Rumulus, Taylor School District, and Westland has now, and you're gonna tell me they're lower than what we paying now?
Uh, Wayne Risa informs me it's lower, but I will double check on that for you.
I I I, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'll definitely, I, but I know.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just one final thing. Uh, since, you know, going down the road with everything, and we know it's gonna be a lengthy process, at least the conversation is starting. Uh, one thing that Councilman Wally had mentioned was when we talked about our buildings being gone and needing to be restored, they need to be made whole on that. And then Councilman Williams brought up the the debts for, or the mils, if you will, for the different communities. I believe what, our city is split up into five different districts with Inkster, Rumulus, Taylor, Wayne, Westland, and Westwood. I think another, uh, service of making the people whole for Inkster would be to have the entire city of Inkster encompassed in the Inkster Public School system. And that way, we could be self-sufficient, like when the folks out here talk about how Harrison used to be or how Inkster used to be versus us still splitting up five and paying other communities. You know, let's make it fair, just like they got a fairness, let's have a fairness in Inkster, and we can, you know, that's something down the line that I would like to see talked about. Um, because, you know, for instance, my parents or my father went to Taylor Schools, but, uh, my neighbors, I grew, went on street, went to Inkster Public Schools and so on and so forth. So that's just something I actually would like to see either use as leverage or in conversations to find out, under this Democratic, um, um, let me put it this way, the light speed rate you said things are going at in Lansing, if this is something that could be thrown in there and not just had a can kicked down the road for another ten years.
I appreciate that, and I think it's a necessary part of the discussion, and and I hope to work with you and and anyone else who is interested in in working towards that, a goal of some sort to find a solution. Um, again, I think that's, that's gotta come from the community, as as you've outlined, and, uh, I think there will probably be some heavy debate over what that solution is. But anyway, my office can help facilitate that and work alongside, uh, organizers, because it's gonna take a push up there, I think we all know this. Um, Lansing isn't necessarily an institution that's been friendly to our district for a very long time. Um, and I think right now is one of the times to do it with Democratic majority, plus we have a, at the end of this year, we're projected to have a five-point-seven billion-dollar school aid surplus, um, which is the first time we've seen numbers like that in a long time, so, um, although it will take time, I think moving in that direction is is something that we we should look into. Uh, so I look forward to connecting with you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. All right, moving right into the consent agenda.
Someone.
Second. Moved improperly second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Ayes have in motion carries. All right, as it relates to boards and commissions, Madam Clerk, I want to make sure that we get those on for next, um, meeting, because I do have some appointments to the Downtown Development Authority and a couple of, um, folks have expired on the authority that will still qualify to be on the authority. So I'll make sure that I get those names to you and, um, make sure that we have all the documents necessary for the body to review. Also too, we do have some other vacancies from the council side, um, just on other boards, so we definitely want to make sure you guys have an open appointment. If you have an open appointment, thank you, if you have an open appointment, please, let's get some folks in there and make sure we have quorum at our meetings. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint, uh, Khalida Mohammed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. She called and stated she wanted to continue. Uh, she, uh, her tenure is five-five-four-twenty-three, so she's, you know, right in there.
Yep. Is there support?
Second.
Is, I'm sorry, second, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have in motion carries. We will have order in the room as we're conducting city's business. Okay. All right, anybody else? Moving right along, all right then, please, city planer.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. Um, we're here tonight for the second reading of Chapter one-twenty-four Business Licensing Ordinance as it relates to the marijuana establishments. I know we talked at length at the last meeting, so I'm gonna keep it brief in a summary format, and we can get into any further discussion if there needs to be. I want to highlight the changes that this, uh, ordinance amendment makes. It. It requires, uh, social equity for all marijuana establishments, which means an applicant must live in one of the one hundred and eighty-four Michigan communities designated by the state that are disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition, or must provide evidence of a marijuana conviction, or the applicant must have been registered, a registered medical marijuana primary caregiver for two years from two thousand eight to twenty seventeen. Or if none of those apply, the applicant must provide a gold level social equity plan as approved by the city council and meeting the state requirements. So that gold equity social, um, that gold level social equity actually comes from the cannabis regulatory agency and then you all would oversee the details of that. It also adds a strict timeline for the entire application period, so we constantly have, uh, goals that the applicants must meet. Um, that makes sure that we get, you know, their response in a timely fashion and they get to the finish line and have a building and a business operating, um, without, you know, looking at vacant lots or vacant buildings. It also adds, uh, language to specify that separation buffers are established at the time of application and this is an important one. As we've seen in the past, the process was unclear on that and so this will really help, uh, clarify the process for the planning department and your body when we're looking at future, uh, potential establishments. So that's having to do with the business, uh, ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Please, okay, hold on one second.
No, my senior.
All right, up, now with the business license, those were, I just wanna make, make sure we keep this, you know, as simple as possible so that not only the council understands, but the public understands as well, uh, what's being added to this is the business license portion. Now, from the old ordinance, is there still going to be the applicant, business has outstanding taxes, fines, fees, or any, uh, liens owed to the city? Is that still gonna be a part of the business license?
Yes, so all of the, um, I guess I'll refer to it more quickly as the background check component, you know, there's, has to go through the actual police background check, that check needs to occur. Um, that all is still maintained in this ordinance.
Okay, now also with the designated maximum number of licenses has already been granted by the city, so can can you walk me through that with, if we were to, uh, if we were to do a straight cap, would that include in the business license?
My understanding is that, uh, portion of the business licensing was removed during, I don't know, the last amendment, whenever that occurred, so I I know there's some a a paper trail of documentation I've kinda had to follow and that was where I believe that cap was removed previously. Uh, so I don't believe that that's in the current, um, ordinance, it might be in a a past version that.
Okay, so this is the time to put it in if the council is suggesting.
Yes.
So, so, yeah, that, I would, I would definitely want to be added to this business license process. Now, I just wanna make sure that we we kinda talking, you know, on the itemized types of things that at the last meeting, I just listened to some of the questions that was asked, but it's like the public didn't really quite understand what those additional things or maybe things that can be rejected or removed. Now, I know we talked about, we talked about, uh, the addition that was added to this ordinance was the green zone.
So that's being added to the zoning ordinance, uh, which is the next item up for second reading, so for the sake of clarity, I'm gonna try to keep these as separate as possible, although they do interact, I'm gonna, I'm really gonna try and keep them separate.
Yeah, because I wanna, I wanna keep it simple so that, you know, if we have to follow A, B, C, D so that we can get a clear understanding of what's being added, what's being taken out, what needs to come in so that, you know, once we pass this, it won't be no misunderstandings. Because a lot of times we can get out into the public and we're gonna talk to our community members and there's a lot of misinformation that is given to the public, so I wanna make this as clear as a glass of ice water. Thank you, thank you, that's all I have.
Very well said. My question was, as it relates to the timeline, cause I know that that's the biggest part of it, where you have applicants come in and then they're just kinda in limbo. Um, or, you know, they go at their pace, so is it like, say, a a year? Six months, what what is that?
Yeah, so, um, we went even a step further than just saying you have a year to finish this whole process. We added a specific timeline for each step that they're responsible for. So for instance, if it's, we require that your site plans be revised before they go to Planning Commission, you have thirty days to provide us with those revised site plans. These are the points, pain points that we've seen in the process, so overall, I don't have the total up off the top of my head, but it's probably about a year and a half for the entire process to build out is the requirement. Now, I can sit down and look and add up the whole timeline, but it's actually segmented out so that they can, they basically can get, uh, removed from the process at any point if they don't hit those timelines. So we're not waiting till the end for them to be like, oh, well, you had a year and a half to complete the whole process. It's like, no, if you don't meet this goal at this point in the process, then you have to start back at the first step, or if there's someone in waiting, they get to then move forward with their application.
Now, to, uh, Councilor Shaw's point as it relates to just making sure that everything is clear and outlined properly, is that something that we should be reviewing as well?
I mean, it is clear in a table, I can pull the table up and I can read the table out for you if you wanna spend the time.
Something that you have in our documents?
Yes.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
I did have it pulled up, but I have a blank page right now, so give me one moment to reload it.
And again, go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, from the time that they receive their preliminary approval, they have sixty days to submit their preliminary site plan, their special land use application and draft social equity plan.
Sixty days for the job.
If revisions are required, the applicant has two weeks to submit the revisions.
Thirty days.
That's a suggested timeline for the staff, so the staff has suggested timelines, but the applicants have required timelines, so I just wanna make sure that distinction is clear as well. Then, the applicant moves forward at that point to the planning commission, assuming that their revisions have been accepted and are, uh, sufficient. After they move forward at any point, obviously, the council could at that point say your special land use has been denied. That would kick them back to a no and they would lose their buffer establishment. If they move forward with the final site plan, they have sixty days after their council approval to submit their final site plans. If revisions are required, again, they have two weeks. After receiving final site plan approval, uh, they have one year to apply for certificate of occupancy and complete all of their site and construction work, which is, um, consistent with what's currently required for all other businesses, so that one year is kind of the standard as it's set out in the ordinance right now.
Okay, that's the last part with the city clerk, right?
That is for the certificate of occupancy and then, um.
Number fifteen, right?
Yes, correct. So that will be, that's, you know, and then they receive their business license after that. So that would be all of their timelines, that they would have, their goals they would have to meet.
Any questions as it relates to? Okay, continue.
To continue to read through the whole, uh, ordinance, that was the whole timeline.
Okay, I guess as it relates to the summary, you said you were giving us, or you?
Oh, I I gave the summary, we're in the question and.
Okay.
Okay, what about the what, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, sir.
What about the one year after receiving local and state, what what is that on nineteen?
So, that's their renewal process, which currently everyone has to renew annually.
So they they give them one year?
But yeah, that's, and that's how it's currently structured, that's how the state requires it, that's, um, I guess nothing new to your point.
Any questions?
I would just like to know, so what you, what you reading there, uh, come up, uh, putting in, it's it's no cap on it, am I right?
Not in this portion, no.
It's just the business license, so we're just trying to tighten up the business license.
Okay, but because I was concerned that we was talking about, you know.
We haven't got there yet. She's about to go into that next.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Um, the lottery, of course, being the business license, now what what process, when does that come in, in the steps that we just spoken about?
The lottery would be at the beginning of the process and the very rare occasion that you had two applicants come in for the same address at the same time. So, at, I've, the clerk and I have discussed this, the likelihood of this is almost none, but, you know, just with the provision of if you have to somehow make a decision, who gets to move forward in the process, that's where the lottery provision would come in.
Okay, now it goes in detail of how the lottery, um, process work, that they write the names on the paper and shake it up and pull it out. Who will actually be over that process, the lot- the lottery picking process?
So, uh, that would be the city clerk and the planning department.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, go ahead to the next one, please.
So this is the summary for Chapter one fifty-five, this is the second item under your second readings. Um, again, I'm gonna give a high-level summary and we can get into whatever details you want to. So this is a summary of the changes, which would be the addition of the green zone, um, which would remove the separation requirements between like businesses in the B three district, which is between Henry Ruff and Middlebell along Michigan Avenue. Um, I wanna note quickly that there were two options presented as the green zone could be a um, opportunity to restrict all marijuana establishments to only that area, or the second option would be to continue to allow the marijuana establishments in the zone districts as they are now in addition to the green zone, so.
No, 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 I mean.
No, please, no, this is what we're here for, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Now, when you, when you talk about those two options, now with that second option, with the second option, it's it's strictly a, uh, special land use.
Yes, so there, it does not change that all marijuana establishments would continue to be special land uses.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's, if it's labeled a green zone, then it wouldn't be a special land use.
No, it would, it would still continue to be a special land use, it just wouldn't require a thousand feet between the facilities.
Okay, so, so with that, with that said, those still have to come back to council without them just automatically being.
That is correct.
So, yeah, okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Council.
I was just trying to finish to get down to the part where we, where where we need to talk about putting a, putting a cap period throughout this.
Because, I'm sorry, I mean, I just wanna make this, make sure that, you know, we're on the same page and that we can make sure this is understanding. Now, when you talk about, can you, uh, back up to the green zone? Can you talk about the green zone a little bit and what what it would actually do or create?
So the green zone would simply remove the separation requirements between like facilities. So you would still maintain your five hundred feet from drug-free zones, um, you would still have those requirements in place, it would just simply be from, for instance, marijuana retailer to marijuana retailer would not need to be separated by a thousand feet, um.
Yeah, see now, that's, that's the, you know, that's the understanding that we we have to get to, you know, so, you know, you wouldn't have to have that if you're in the green zone.
Correct.
But if you outside of the green zone and you don't have a green zone, you need the thousand-foot buffer.
That's correct.
That these facilities cannot be in that zone or close to each other so it can eliminate themselves out.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So it would, yes, the ordinance, uh, also adds, uh, designated consumption establishments. It adds special events, it also adds a definition and use for educational research facilities. Uh, it adds stronger standards for odor control for all facilities with, um, an extra set of standards for cultivation and processing centers. Uh, it offers a clear definition of how to measure for separation standards, which is something that's missing from the ordinance right now.
Yes.
It adds an adi- uh, clear definition of drug-free zones that is consistent across uses, so right now the ordinance as it reads for marijuana retailers, uh, the, it is not clear, sometimes it mentions childcare facilities, but sometimes it does not include childcare facilities if it's, you're looking at a cultivation center. I think from looking at it, the intention was for it to be consistent across all the uses, so this essentially defines a drug-free zone and then applies it consistently.
Absolutely.
It removes marijuana retailers from the B one district, so there's only very small clusters of B one, um, that are primarily neighborhood commercials, so they're usually maybe four corner parcels on like the corner of Inkster and um, a residential street, so taking that out of the potential neighborhoods. And it streamlines the language into one section for all the marijuana facilities, so instead of repeating uh, standards from cultivation to, um, retailers, you have it all in one place, and then there's additional use standards that are specific to each one of those. Um, that's more of kind of a clerical administrative, just update that makes it easier for us to administer the code.
Would that also include the, uh, social equity piece for cultivating, cultivating centers as well or secured transporters or?
Social equity component is in the business licensing section, just wanna add that for clarity. And it's for all marijuana business licenses, so it's not simply retailer, it's for any marijuana establishment that someone is applying for a license for.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, when you talk about, um, odor, I have not seen a facility yet in Inkster that's odorless. So what's gonna be the difference?
So the code previously, uh, was largely silent on the issue of odor standards. Um, the state also was not really offering very much guidance in terms of odor control. Since then, we've added this additional language for filtration, certain standards they must meet for their filtration, and the, um, environmental and, well, it's Eagle, the state's environmental control group has also added standards that especially cultivation and processing centers now must meet for air quality filtration, um, and the CRA is working with them as well for that, so that's very recent, within the last year that they've added that regulatory component to Eagle's, uh, provision. And then, like I said, the co- Inkster code did not have very specific language regarding what odor control requirements actually were necessary.
Yeah, cause I know the previous, um, they were supposed to have something put in place, but it's horrible.
Yeah.
And I don't think a good filtr- filtration would clean, would clear that up, we still gonna smell, cause it's it's a strong smell. Um, also too, when we talk about, um, event organizers, designated consumption establishments down there, uh, why do we have to have that? I mean, I don't think that we have to have that.
You can remove those.
Okay.
I think that's the consensus of this body.
Yeah. So, uh.
You're just trying to line up with the state and everything that the state offers as it relates to planning, so this is the body that makes the decision so we can eliminate those.
Okay, so which ones are we gonna eliminate, the, the?
You can eliminate more.
I think the three you just named.
Yep, with the three you just named.
Okay.
So, just so we're on the same page, consumption lounges?
Yeah, that's the, the designated consumption establishment.
And what else was it?
Temporary events.
Yep.
And then there's, uh, educational research facilities, would, so it added three uses and then the additional for the temporary event was the temporary event organizer, which isn't a use, but it's someone who has to hold that license, so we did add that into this. So there's really four components there that are added in.
I'm sorry, one second, Councilman Mayor.
Okay, and then, uh, one thing that I have, uh, uh, changing this ordinance, um, with the buffers, uh, my sense is is that if we saturate the market, people are not gonna make money. And I think that the buffer still should be, I don't think the green zone should be there, that's my, that's my take. Um, we do have three operating ones right now, um, what's gonna happen to them if we saturate the market? Somebody is not gonna make it. So, down there in Henry Rough, people are building buildings or whatever they're gonna build, and I just feel that Inkster is gonna be left with the buildings and nobody's in there. And I think that this body should just take a look at it, because it's just, it's too much. And people, um, companies in Detroit are closing because it's too many. So, and I think that this body should actually just leave the ordinance where it was, thousand-feet buffer, and then, and, and do not have a green zone, but that's my, that's my take, because of the saturation. Um, and they're not gonna ma- I mean, the, the three that we have, we should let them keep going and and those that's in the works, in the, in the progress of trying to get one, first come, first, you know, whatever you guys have, first one build theirs. That's, that's my intake on that, I'm done there.
Okay, Councilwoman Washington?
Oh, no, I, I didn't say anything.
Oh, I thought you had some.
No, I was just agreeing.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I have to, um, sh- share and agree with what Councilwoman Howard said. We, we don't need to put the greens on nowhere, you know? Um, so that was something that we, they, they started before trying to put the greens on certain areas, and then it so happened that was my area, they was trying to put the greens on every time. Okay, and so what I'm saying is, you know, you know, as long as the buffer is there, you know, that we have it, there'd be so many feet and various things like that, you know, I don't think we should try to put no, establish no policy for, for, uh, green zone. You know, we, that should have been out, I thought it was out by October, but I see it's keep, keep coming back up.
Yeah, we're just trying to make sure we clarify our, our business license process and our zoning process, because we don't wanna be in any type of situation. So that's what, that's what planning is attempting to do.
Okay, well.
With, with, of course, the help of this body, but it's our decisions, so. Did you have anything else, sir?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman Chisholm, did you have something? Sure, I saw you reach out, go ahead.
Um, as far as, I guess, when we get ready to make the motions for this, are we gonna be doing these separately? The, for item A, 'cause that's the second read, and then item B, 'cause that's the second read as well?
Yes.
Okay, um, 'cause I do have some language, just per the last council meeting, when we all had spoke, we're in consensus. I was just ready for at least, uh, item B to make that motion inclusive of what everyone said, and then if there's any additional amendments, like, uh, my colleague said, with the green zone having or not having it, you know, I would be open to accepting those amendments as well.
Okay. Is it anything else?
That's all I have to offer on this, if there's no other questions.
All right.
I have.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Washington.
Uh, when we spoke again, I think most of us are in agreement that consumption centers and things of that nature, because there's really no regulatory situation for them, because you can, you can't buy marijuana there, you can't buy food. You can bring in your own, and there's no way to guarantee you not lacing it with something that could be, and there's no, um, there's no regulation that says somebody isn't bringing in their, their crop and selling it to the people already in there, too. So, these things, I am in agreement with my colleagues that if we're lumping this all together or whatever, that there should be no green zone, because in allowing no separation between these in one spot, but requiring the others to have one that are outside of it, that means we can still have as many in the green zone and still have these out here, so we're not eliminating anything, which has been our point from the beginning, to, uh, minimize the marijuana footprint in the city. Second, consumption centers are like the old-time crack houses, I mean, you wanna, you wanna smoke, you wanna smoke, go home, okay? That's what I feel about it, but no consumption centers, no outdoor parties, no facilitators, no any of that other stuff, because those things were taken out in the last, the one that's September twenty twenty. Those things were taken out, and how they got back in here, whose bright idea that was, I don't know, but I'm against that, too. Then the other thing that you spoke of, oh shoot, I am so old. That, that, um, the equity portions and things like that, they're not really equitable, because the money that you're asking for in this, or the qualifications or whatever, are not things that people can meet. And then plus, is this fifty-one percent still in this equity portion, too?
No.
No, it's gone, and that's where that last thing that you brought up, could you specify that, the gold seal or the gold whatever?
Yeah, so to meet the social equity component, you have the four options, which I think are attainable for of variety of different types of applicants, if you don't, you know, meet any of the three kind of pre-existing, being you're from one of the disenfranchised communities, you have a marijuana conviction, or you were a marijuana caregiver, medical marijuana caregiver, then you have to have a social equity plan, and there's, uh, the state requires a certain level of, for the gold star type of plan, but there's enough, um, room for suggestion where they will still need to come to this body to get approval on their plan, so that might be an investment in the park, um, in putting in play structure, or it could be, you know, s- an addition to the recreation center, I, you know, I'm just throwing things out there that there's different types of things that they would need to suggest that would be bringing, um, investment into the specific parts of the community.
Okay, and when you say they, these are the people applying for the license?
Applicants, correct.
Okay, all right.
And you, and you basically approve or deny them based off of that, so they have to have some type of social equity with them, so it's like community reinvestment. So where you don't, yeah, you don't license it.
The one thing that was in this initially was the cost that goes into doing, that goes into getting a license to begin with. I mean, this is no small amount of money, I mean, you pay five thousand dollars just to say, hello clerk, you know? And so it's, um, it, it's difficult, me, me to understand how this, this whole thing works when it involves tons of money that most people don't have, I guess we, or else we'd have a lot more people applying for this social equity component.
It's to be able to, again, give back to the disenfranchised cities that's been affected adversely from the Marijuana Act.
Yeah, that's fine, but if you don't have the wherewithal or the finances for that.
So you don't get a license.
You, you know, yeah, exactly, so, I, I, it seems like a catch twenty-two to me, you know, that you don't have a license, you don't have this, you, you know, that kinda thing. So that's another portion, but I'm not gonna belabor this, because I think everybody in here knows how I feel. So, I just wanna make sure we have no greens on, that we do some sort of cap, seriously, because, um, I think they, the community should understand that if we cap it now, that means no matter what happens to these others that are in the queue, you can, they will, you don't have to go over your cap that you set, so I want them to understand that, and that's what we need to, and that's all we were trying to do four years ago. Is set something that we wouldn't be inundated, and another thing, I would like to know the, um, the odor-reducing, uh, plans or implements that they're using, because this is bad. I bet you I couldn't pass a drug test, and I don't smoke, you know, 'cause of the, the stuff, you know, in the air and everything, so. It's ridiculous, it is, y'all laughing, I'm gonna go up to TSA and prove it to y'all.
TSA?
But, um, but yeah, so I'd like to know how they're gonna go about doing this, because you can't go nowhere in this city and not contact.
Outside the city, too.
Yeah. Yeah, because people are actually growing too in their homes, in their backyards, too.
But I just wanna know what this remedy is that the state has come up with.
Is, go ahead, you wanna answer, you wanna?
Yeah, I will, I will admit, I'm not a, um, air, you know, and kind of pollution engineer in terms of being able to understand exactly what the state has supplied, but I can let you know that I did look into what is considered the highest level of technology for this, and that's what we've, uh, put into this ordinance. Um, again, I'm getting a white page, so just give me one moment to pull this back up. So the filtration system must consist with, of one or more fans with activated carbon. At a minimum, the fans shall be sized for cubic feet per minute equivalent to the volume of the building divided by three, the filters shall be rated for the applicable carb- cubic feet per minute, um, this will create a scrubbing to ensure that the air leaving the building through an exhaust vent goes through that activated carbon, which I can only speak from personal experience, but I used to have a cigarette smoker right next to my apartment, and I purchased one of these in-home carbon-activated filters and was able to get rid of the odor, not a hundred percent, but enough where it was manageable and not really kind of affecting me on a day-to-day basis. The sis- the filters shall be changed a minimum of, once every three hundred and sixty-five days, or according to manufacturer recommendation. Negative air pressure shall be maintained inside the building, so that's important, so when they're coming and going, we're not letting out that air. The air, only air that's going out of the building is going through the fans. Um, doors and windows shall remain closed, and all, um, entryways must be a double-door vacuum seal, that's kinda how you get that negative air pressure, so you have to have some sort of, you go through one door and then through another door, but neither doors open at the same time. Um, the city may hire an outside expert at the cost of the applicant to review the alternative system design if a applicant does try to apply with an alternative system that doesn't meet these requirements. Um, so that's these additional requirements that we've added into the, to address the odor conditions.
Yeah, we've just been talking about, uh, retailers and cap in retailers, but we know that our, um, uh, cultivating centers are unlimited in the, in one. Am I correct with that?
That's correct.
So we probably wanna take it a step further and just cap those that's currently there now. So you don't have any more growth facilities in the city.
Yeah. And Ms. Chair, with, with that being said, you know, I, I, we was talking, uh, earlier, where if we fast-forward a little bit and if those businesses happen to go out of business, do we still keep that license or that facility? Because, you know, as we talk on council, that we're predicting that, you know, some of these people are gonna be outdated, or, you know, the industry is gonna collapse and what have you. So if they hap- you know, happen to go out of business, do we designate a maximum as we cap that it's, it's a done deal, you can't come back, or we don't get any more business within that facility or that retail?
Yeah, I mean, that would be something that we would, you know, put into the language for the, for, for, for the planner, and of course, our attorney to make sure he put a stamp on that, because basically what you're saying is that if you have five and one go out of business, then you only have four. So it has to be some type of language in there to make sure that that's exactly what the intent is.
Yeah, so we continue to move forward, forward-thinking that these things don't re-occur or repop up.
That's what a cap will do for you, it'll make sure that no matter what happens, you got, like, say, three licenses, okay? We've got s- nine people in the queue now, one falls off, you still only got three licenses you can give off, another five, you still only got three licenses you can give off, that's the point of a cap.
That's what we wanted to.
Right, but you wanted to take it a step further, you saying that if they go out of business, you don't want them to exist anymore, that license goes away.
Mm-hmm.
That license, that, that's what I'm saying, the license.
That's what he's saying in addition to what you're saying.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Would the license go away?
Yeah, we would just, so we would just add it to the language, if that's what you, you know.
So you can't repopulate, or repop up in the future for the future generations to come.
Right, so you're saying if the license goes out, for whatever reason, it's done, no more licenses.
I just wanna, um, offer one item of clarification and then also ask maybe for the attorney's opinion on one matter, but, um, I would suggest that we add specific language, the way that the code works now is if your special land use is, um, not actively in use for a year, that special land use then expires, so if you want it to be more than a, or less than a year, you know, if a business goes out, what, you, let's add that provision in, and then, um, in addition to the city attorney, speaking to the, I just want for clarity for everyone, the applicants who are already in the pipeline or who have been approved by this body, if there's a cap that's put in place now, but they've already received approval, are they able to still achieve their certificate of occupancy if they have their business license?
Well, the law is such that the, the governing municipality has a right to change. If they don't have a license, you know, prior to the city changing, opting in or opting out, city has a right to change it. That won't stop, and it may not stop a lawsuit if someone feels that, you know, they were approved beforehand. I, I believe I mentioned at the last meeting, other municipalities, they've opted out after opting in, some people were in the pipeline, there's active litigation ongoing now, so that's really kind of a decision a body takes to decide whether or not they willing to take the risk to change midstream with those folks in the pipeline. Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Before we call for the vote on, you know, these two items that we've been discussing, um, Ms. Dixon mentioned about the special land use portion and about making the language a little bit more clear, I guess, um, if we could find a way, while we're here, to make that look, uh, in-depth where it talks about, if you will, natural disasters, for instance. Um, and I'm only using this just because of how it transpired when the one dispensary on Inkster Road was set on fire by arson, but then some things happened on our end, where we had transitions of employees, and the ball got dropped when they were trying to move back through the process of reopening, so the building was just unoccupied, so it wasn't necessarily the fault of the applicant, because the special land use that was there and everything, it was just them trying to get the ball up and going and working with us and everything, so I just wanted to know, would that be something we would put in there where it could protect the applicant, so we're not penalizing them, um, but still holding those accountable who just decide to, well, I'm gonna just sit on this for now, and I'll get back to y'all when I do.
And try to sell to somebody else.
Right.
So that's why we put that.
Right.
Put those protections in, for sure.
Three months, six months.
Can I continue?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think I've asked this question before, and it's in reference to the odors and stuff, and I asked you, is there some sort of measurement of how polluted your air is before, you know, you get to a certain point, I mean, what are the decibels or volumes of whatever in the air that say it's unsafe for humans, is there anything there like that?
I have not seen any specific particulate measurement in any of the state regulation or suggested regulation that I've researched.
Okay, and the other thing is, when you were talking about, uh, hiring, uh, the city could hire someone at the, uh, applicant's expense to look into certain, um, requirements there, you know, as far as the, uh, the odors and things of that nature are concerned. Um, if that isn't done, I mean, are our resources, like our police and fire and stuff like that, supposed to do things like that, because from what I've seen, people just do what they wanna do. I mean, we can't stop folks from selling Lucy's at the gas station, so how are we gonna stop these people?
They, he's just talking.
What?
I, he's just saying stuff.
What?
Yeah, but that's not true, when the chief of police was here, though, I mean, you know, that's not the truth.
I see people selling Lucy's all the time, so you gonna tell me?
They, they gotta, real thorough investigation going on with that, and the gas stations have been shut down for that, and.
I know they have been, but I'm saying this is an ongoing situation, and we do not have the resources to continually monitor these people.
If I.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, um, as it relates to hiring an outside agency or specialist, that's in the case that an applicant is suggesting an alternative odor control system.
Okay.
So it's only in the case. So it's only in the case where it doesn't necessarily meet the requirements that we've laid out, but they want, they believe the alternative would be comparable. We would bring in a specialist because no one on our staff has that level of knowledge. They would come out and check that. In terms of the insur- ensuring that people are meeting these requirements, I would like to just applaud the engineering department, the code enforcement department. They've really stepped up the game in terms of making sure that these new businesses and existing businesses are meeting their original requirements as approved with their site plan. And that's not just related to marijuana, but it's a, I I really want to applaud everyone's effort in this because that's that's how this happens and that's how we make sure that these um requirements are met going forward.
Take it a step further. You were at this uh county stated address and um executive Evans talked about the pollution control and odor control system that the county's going to be initiating, so that'll be a level as well. He just didn't already just say marijuana control, but it's all part of that.
I just don't want to go home smelling like it.
Yeah, we're just adding this, just another buffer though. It's another buffer, so the county is definitely a supporter of that.
All right, can we reiterate what we're doing with this ordinance? What we're taking out, what we're putting in? And uh how we're gonna go about this? Because like you said, we want everything to be specific. We wanna, you know, deal with the specif- you know.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. Go ahead.
I have nothing else to offer. I mean, at this point, I believe it's in the hands of the body to make the decisions on what their recommendations will be.
Okay. Steve, I know that you were saying as it relates to the motion, like um as it relates to the second reading. So we're all on the same page. Do we close this portion of it? Does it go or does items go into the agenda as it relates to action items? Or how does that go? What's the next step of that?
You can agree to um go into action. You have your RFC A.
Speak up a little bit more in the mic, please.
There's an RFC A in your packet um that will allow you to take action on the two amendments based on the am- the amendments you want to add to the amendments. So you can take a vote to go into discussion and take a vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what we can say in the past, Mr. Mayor, on the second reading. All right, vote. That's what I'm saying. We're gonna vote individually on those two.
Let's do that. Go ahead. Let's go with the first one.
Oh, oh, sure. I can just shout it up. Keep it moving. I make a motion to approve the amendment to title eleven, chapter one twenty-four of the city's code of ordinance.
Isn't that supposed to be?
Which one is that?
You doing the business license?
No, the first one is the ordinance.
That's the ordinance, B, item eight B one.
Come back A B. So I know that we talked about the business license first. Yeah, so this one would be.
Your motion is what? Oh, I was saying, I would say that I make a motion that we approve the amendment to title eleven, chapter one twenty-four of the city's code of ordinance.
And that's the business license.
Yes.
Just to make sure.
Oh, the business license, okay.
Okay.
And then let's talk about the things that we're adding or deleting.
Think it needs support before a discussion.
Second. Support, discussion. Go through what we're talking about adding and deleting as it relates to the business licenses.
So the the business licensing amendment uh will add the social equity requirement for our all marijuana establishments, which is meeting one of those four categories as we discussed. It's the addition of the timeline for the entire application process, so the goals that the applicant must meet throughout the process. And it's the addition of language to specify that the separation buffers are established at the time of application. And then the addition of the lottery provision in the case that two applicants apply at the same time for the same address to decide who starts the application process. Those are the major changes and then we maintain the licensing um requirements as they are currently in there in the application as it is. So these are more of the administrative side of things.
So these are all just additional to the language that we already have.
So, yes, this is a um, the way it's been presented, it's reorganized things in the chapter, but that's, those are the additional items and then we've maintained the business licensing standards that have been in place up to this point.
So I just want to make sure that's.
But we're removing.
Yeah.
We're removing green zones. But then we're removing the uh consumption. I'm just making sure, because when you say you approve that amendment, I do not.
No, we haven't got, this is just the business license. Because that's what we ran into now, that's what we're dealing with now with the first to the line to the finish, is not having the business license type. This is gonna tighten that up.
Yeah, so that's, you know, absolutely tight.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any ayes, ayes having motion carries. Second one, please.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments for to title fifteen, chapter one fifty-five, articles twenty-nine and one forty-six of the city zoning ordinance. Uh inclusive of one, the thousand-foot buffers between recreational provisionary centers. Two, placing a cap on adult-use marijuana retail stores at three. Number three, removing designated consumption lounge establishment, event organizer and temporary event uses. Four, placing a cap on cultivation centers, and five, eliminating the green zones. And.
I think that's all of this.
Yeah.
About the educational um research facility.
Educational research facility.
Well, I, well, I guess if we support, I'll accept an amendment to my motion.
Second. Second, and now we're in discussion.
Okay, which, okay. Was that a second?
Okay, so if we eliminate the green zone, we have to specifically say all the other ones that's up under there, like the bullet points?
No, we were just adding, it was a recommendation from the planning commission to actually add the green zone to take care of the situation that we got going on over in that area. You know what I mean? Now, we're not doing that at all, so just making it clear.
Okay, right. Okay, okay.
But as it relates to the three, you got three already in existence and then you got the focus is in the the race to the finish.
Right.
You can't, I I don't, I think, David, I think you need to chime in on that.
We can't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
With the three in the pipeline?
You got, yeah, the ones that's in the pipeline over in that area, you're saying that's the one to the finish, so it'll be an additional one. If you say you got three, go ahead.
I just want to remind this body that not all of the facilities, the retailers are in that area between Henry Rough and Middle Belt, so there's also one on Inkster, there's one on Michigan Avenue outside of that area. So when you're crafting your language, just be mindful that you have others that are legally standing within the separation requirements that are, you know, through going through the process that don't fall within that specific area.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
But when they applied for this, we still had the thousand-feet buffers, so they understood that, right?
Yes, but what I I'm trying to clarify is that, yes, you have the, there is a number of establishments that fall within a thousand feet of each other, but there are also establishments that are legally conforming within the thousand-foot buffer from other businesses. So um I believe there's four that are legally conforming that would not be in that overlap of a thousand feet from each other.
You say four?
Yeah.
So that's in addition to the three that you have?
That are existing, correct.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, please.
I was just gonna say again, just to reiterate to my colleagues, um I put the number out there, just like when we talked about placing a cap on the cultivation centers, but I'm open to an amendment, whatever the majority thinks the number should be. I just wanted to make sure we got the language out there so we could discuss it and come to a consensus on what's a compromise, if you will.
Got you. Go ahead.
What number you put out there?
You said three.
I roughly said three.
Aren't we, aren't, are we confusing things because even though we say three, that's our cap? These people can continue with whatever they're doing, but if they fall off the radar, there's no additional. You know what I'm saying? Isn't that what I'm thinking or am I confused in that? Correct me if I'm wrong. And that's what Denary saw, coun- council, council member Denary was saying, correct?
Yeah, if 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 there's a a one that falls off, that that license would not be renewed. That license just be eliminated, period. So that's what I would want to be a part of that, but we still have to get to a hard number. Because as she may mention, that is more than just the three.
This in the confront, this is, this is part of the old ordinance. This already basically, they can open.
Yeah, they can open. Nobody's trying to mess with any of that. We're just trying to make sure there's no more. We have a hard number to say we're not going past this. So if three is not applicable, then maybe four, because we know four is coming online, but no more than that.
You guys, come on, you guys gotta start to talk up.
But we already have more than three in the pipeline, correct?
Correct.
Right.
How many do we have in the pipeline? And some of those are not within a thousand feet of each other as well. How many do we have in the pipeline and how many overlap? I thought it was two that overlap, weren't.
There's potentially, depending on who gets to the first, there's three or four that potentially overlap between Henry Rough and Middle Belt.
Within a thousand foot of each other.
Right, but they're not all, you know, if the one on the far end gets it, then it's not gonna knock out the one on the other far end. But if the one in the middle gets it, it's gonna knock out the two next to it. So hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah.
And then in addition to that, we have one, two, three, four more that it, that's including the um location that burned down on Inkster Road that's currently not operating. So four, including that one, that are outside of that area that do not overlap, that are legally conforming to the thousand-foot separation requirements. That's in addition to the other locations that are already currently operating.
Okay.
So, so it's on like seven.
I have a question then. In reference to that, when they reapply for their license and say they're open and they're fine and we have a cap, it doesn't impact the reaplic- reapplication, does it?
No, as long as they continue to operate their special land.
Okay, so these people who are there knew they had thousand-foot buffers in place at the time they made their application, right? And it's.
The issue that arose, so everyone is clear, and that's one of the reasons that we're having this discussion, is yes, everyone was aware there was a thousand-foot separation. Issue was not everyone, it was, no one could say, no, you are denied, no, you are. There's a, this condition because no one knew which establishment was going to come online first.
That's not our responsibility.
I just wa- I'm offering that as a point of clarity.
Okay. Okay, well, it's not our responsibility to make sure that they have everything they need if the, if the process was laid out to them and they knew this existed. So they, in essence, shoot, shot their sh- whatever and took their chances, right? So that's.
You only got one that's like that though, that's what she's trying to explain.
We what?
You only have one area that's like that. That's that area between Middle Belt and Henry Rough. But the other ones are already in the the buffer, the required buffers.
Right, that's, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not complaining about any of that. I'm just attempting to set some hard line, uh uh some line of demarcation that we don't go above.
Right.
Now, those people that are in that queue now, they're perfectly welcome to open. And if they, you know, don't succeed, then it's just not, you know, like, oh, well, they closed, you got a license.
No, that's right. That's what the councilman, that's what Councilman Shaw was saying. If they don't get by, you know, based off of these timelines that we put in place now, they're done.
Okay, so that number definitely changed.
They close, they don't reopen. Simple as that.
Correct. If, if they close and real reopen now, I'll defer to the attorney. But my understanding is the current uh applicants would not be required to go through the business licensing process that's laid out as it is now, because they have already completed that portion, just again for the point of clarity, okay.
So it's like a grandfather.
But you could, and I'm let, let me say this, because every year it's a renewal. So you could require that every year moving forward. Could you? Could you not?
You could. The amendment just passed uh without that language. If you wanted to reopen that, I would defer to the clerk to have that included with the renewal.
Yeah, we can rescind it, come back with and include that language to it.
Okay, I'm confused.
It is not actually hurt, I mean, it's actually benefiting the city if you do it that way. If you're talking about being about the city's business, i- if you're talking about being about the city's business and doing what's right for the city, then it it benefits the city. I get the business is, the business is the business, but we're talking about community reinvestment and adding the social equity to it. Is that what I'm, is that's, that's what I'm saying as it relates to that.
My concern would, that would be, you know, we could require some sort of social equity plan with the renewal, but the other components, you know, we've already approved these individuals.
They've already been in the catcher, as long as they don't violate the other stuff that was pre-existing, then you just, okay, I get that.
But we can add that though to the language, those who are on the prevailing side of that motion. So we could just add it.
Adding, do we have to rescind what we did?
I didn't get that part either, what? We are on the zoning, so that way we don't be all off on 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 everything.
Yeah.
We won't keep going too long. Okay, all right then.
Were there any amendments to my motion, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, we just add it as it relates to Councilman Shaw making sure, um uh just make sure the research piece.
Order research piece.
I think you said he didn't want that, that one in there.
Your number would change though, right?
Oh, the number from three would change to, what is it, seven?
For those that are not overlapping?
Right.
Is that the question? So it would be nine altogether with one in between Henry Rough and Middle Belt.
So give me those locations, so we're on the same page on your map, because I'm just, I can't see that in my mind. You got one in between Henry Rough and, go ahead.
So you have one um over here on Michigan Avenue, just right on the other side of Trowbridge.
Okay.
Right, basically across from.
So that's right behind us right here, the old saloon.
That's correct.
That's the one that Abe Hatcham came before us for, okay?
You have one at Princess.
Uh please, order. Go ahead.
You have one at Princess and Michigan.
Princess and Michigan. Where's, where are you talking about?
That's three fifteen, I believe.
You talking about, you talking about Harrison? Or Isabel? You talking about?
I I'm, my map is not like that detailed, so I can.
It's Michigan and Princess.
Oh, yeah, 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 right, exactly. So that is right, that's right.
Would it be preferential to the body if I printed this exhibit out for everyone so you could visually see what was going on? No, it's. Buffers are drawn out and you can see where everything is.
Into the?
I don't know if I. Then you have one on Cherry Hill, just east.
Divide.
Yep. Then there's uh three one five north, or I'm sorry, there's the Flower Bowl at, on Michigan Avenue.
Flower Bowl, okay.
Then you have an applicant at two nine two two five, which is where the old tire store was on the corner of Middle Belt and Michigan.
Right, that's Holly Saw.
Then you have the uh Flight Club. And then you have uh two parcels over two nine eight nine nine, which was the.
But those are the ones that's going through the race to the finish.
Now we're into, one of them will win though, right?
That's what I'm saying. Just, that's that area though. So if it happens to be that particular address, then it'll knock out.
So starting with two, um, starting with the Flight Club. That would, that's where we get the overlap. So all the rest that I previously listed are okay. We have one that's currently going through litigation, right? Sweet B is also, so that's just for, oh, no. Because I have that included potentially as the map. So then Flight Club would potentially knock out the next two, which is two nine eight nine nine. And then I believe it's um three zero zero seven. And then I believe it's, um, three zero zero seven, Michigan, which is that large building.
That's not like the seven.
Yeah, you still got seven. I'm just trying to figure out where you're getting your other number from. Because you got two three fifteens you got. Okay, go ahead, let's see it.
So here's your over, overlapping area.
Yep. So that's the overlapping area right there, between Henry Rough and Middlebelt. All right.
So this is Flight Club. This is two nine eight nine nine. I believe this is, um.
The Blue House?
And then we have one all the way down here, which, um, I think is actually.
Well, that's the micro business, that wouldn't be affected anyway.
So you have eight, if we include the one that's currently going through litigation. But these are all retailers.
Now, just for point of clarification, um, as it relates to, uh, Inxter Road, um, at Cherry Hill at the Flower Bowl, right? The Flower Bowl on Michigan Avenue would be eliminated. Right. Because it would just be going over to there, to the new location.
Yeah, ain't what they say.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure if that's correct. I, I don't know if they've applied for a second license. I, I just wanna put out there that I, I have not seen anything to that statement that they would need to relocate at this new location. That might be the intention, but I haven't seen that, just so.
So have they put an application to become another location?
So they would only have to go through the business licensing portion, because they have an existing special land use on Michigan Avenue. They would be inhabiting a special land use that already existed on Inxter. So that would not have gone through the planning process.
Because we had, we didn't necessarily have that, so they wouldn't be part of it, because they wouldn't be affected by that, like you were talking about before, because of the disaster.
So that was already approved, though, right?
So that was already approved. That's what I'm, yeah.
You can't have two licenses, I mean, two locations under the same license.
But they could have a separate license, is what I'm.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. They, he couldn't just open a Flower Bowl under the existing Flower Bowl.
Right, but from what I'm hearing her say is that the one on Michigan Avenue was still existing and the one on East Road would exist too.
So that's gonna have to be two separate.
He can't come up, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make. It can't be done under the same license. He has to get two separate licenses if he's gonna have two.
Yeah, is that's what didn't happen?
I, I can't speak to that, because again, it doesn't relate to planning, because the special land uses for both those locations already existed. So they're inhabiting a existing special land use on Inxter Road. And they have a special land use at their current location. So that would have to do with the clerk and applying for a second business license.
At that location.
Right, but that, it, it's just, uh, it's irrelevant in terms of the planning pro- part of the process.
Go ahead.
Now, with, with that second location, how would they be able to open, uh, I think it's a daycare right there, so that's not.
The, uh, Wayne County District Court, when that first arose, and I believe your body actually voted to deny it, the Wayne County Circuit Court came in with a court order and, an injunction that the special land use had to be issued. I, I just found that documentation last week.
That was before us. That was on the last, that's the, yeah.
And now we're gonna have a hookah, was a hookah lounge. That's not.
It's, yeah, to the, I believe it's on the other side of the street, a little bit to the south, um. There's no separation requirements between smoking lounges or any, you know, any of the businesses, bar, lounge, however you wanna classify it, and, uh, marijuana. Marijuana doesn't have any separation requirements, other than the drug-free zones and the like facilities. So, you know, they could have a, a bar next door.
So if we have a current location that's in violation of the drug-free zone, is there anything that can be done about that?
We could work through code enforcement and, uh, you know, they would potentially get a, a cease and desist to stop business. But the, I don't know if the one you're referencing is the three one five Inxter Road, the new Flower Bowl location. That one has a court, you know, that went through litigation and the court ordered that to be issued, so that would not be something we can get involved in.
Okay, but that's not the one I'm referencing, so if there was such a situation, then you'd work through ordinance at that point.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I know, I know there was one amendment, which was adding a re- uh, was it Educational Research Center?
To not, yeah.
To not, yeah. And then the other two things I just wanted to make sure I get clarity on is, was there a number on placing a cap on cultivation centers? And then what number are we changing to place a cap on adult-use retail stores?
Cultivating centers, do you have a number for, I mean, we have?
I do not have that number in front of me.
Then you should, instead of cap, I think the cap should just be on what you have currently for cultivating centers.
You had a designated maximum.
I just wanna add anecdotally, um, the city has already received notice that there was one business that has failed to make their application renewal, so, um, we've already seen some of the market just naturally weed out the grower and processing facilities, just as a piece of information for your peace of mind.
That one never even got started, though. That one never even got started. They just didn't have the money.
So just so, so I, make sure I heard it correctly, as far as the cultivation number, you said just cap it at what we have.
We have right now.
And then if, if they go out of business.
No, we cap it at what we have right now for cultivation.
You don't, there's no more cultivating. Councilwoman Wiley, was you saying something different?
Something different since the day this began. You saying tapping it at seven?
As it relates to cultivating centers.
Oh, cultivating. How many do we have in there? Because the whole idea of making it unlimited in the cultivation centers, if the area is small enough, where depending on what they, they do, they limit themselves.
That's where you're getting all the smell from right now.
Well, you call it feel, I call it facts.
Mr. Mayor, I was just asking a question, if there was a number or what language you wanted to add to the motion, or, or what?
No, I just said you just cap it at where it's at right now, for what you have. I don't know the number of what you have. I can go down the list of them.
But I just wanna add that if they go out of business, that those, because they don't have to have no license, I mean, if they have to have licenses or whatnot to start that business, then those licenses should be eliminated for cultivating centers.
That's where, yeah, retail and cultivating.
Okay, so going forward, it's not with the ones that's already in the. It's on, only the new ones, right? Because you have that same situation that you're talking about, that Inxter, three fifteen, and the other one that's on Michigan Avenue. Because they're burnt down, and it's still, it's still a special land use, they're still using it for the same thing. So you're not talking about, you're talking about new ones.
Yeah, as we move forward. So if they go out of business, but see, that's where we should have been, we should have protected.
David? I don't, I don't know how, without, at the time one goes out of business, how you, how you cap it without bringing a new, you know, a new motion. I don't know how it automatically goes into effect.
So you say they've been closed for more than thirty days or something? Can you say that?
Well, the issue is if it's closed for thirty days, how, how do you prevent another applicant from filing for that license? Theoretically, it's gonna have to work that if one is eliminated, and it's eliminated for thirty days, the city takes action to reduce that number by one.
But I, I mean, that has to be made sure, made clear to the next set of folks that comes on council, to the next mayor and council, that this. I mean, I understand that they might want it, but it's still some language in the books that, hey, you can eliminate this at every meeting. Can that be done, that?
You can't force that.
You can't eliminate it, or you can't stop, uh, uh, a legislative body from coming in.
I mean, I'm trying to protect them going forward. I mean, not just the legislative body, but the community as a whole.
Then the community will have to come back again. Okay, not to be confused with anything, but I think the number is seven or eight on the retail side.
It's eight minus the micro business and including the case that's currently going through litigation.
Right, so that's eight.
Which one is the micro?
That's all the way towards Henry Rough.
Because I wrote them down. I just wanted to make sure I got the right number.
Three zero zero one nine. Michigan Avenue. One nine one and one eight one, three zero zero one eight one.
So you didn't give that, that address in the first list, so I, I, I still have nine without that address.
This map shows nine, including the micro business. So there's two six two zero one Michigan, which is all the way to the east on Michigan Avenue. There's, I don't know this address off the top of my head, but this one right in the middle between John Daly and Inxter Road, on the south side of Michigan Avenue.
That's three fifteen.
That's, yep, and then Sweet B potentially. Yep, and then going west, we have, uh, Flower Bowl on Michigan. Then you have two nine two two five Michigan, which is the old tire shop.
Yep, on the corner.
Flight Club. Then you have two nine eight nine nine. And then you have three zero zero seven, Michigan. Then you have one four four Inxter Road. And then you have three, um, one five Inxter Road, and then you have five on Cherry Hill.
But out of those three, David, one of them, or two of them potentially won't get a license, because that's the race to the finish. Right, because of the overlap that's happening right there on the map right there. Correct.
But didn't she say one in the middle would cancel up the two, but?
That's correct. That's what we're talking about. That's where you get eight.
But if it's one on one side, then how's that work if it's one farther to the?
It's eliminated. It's within a thousand-foot barrier.
You got the thousand-foot buffer.
So you essentially, you have thousand-foot buffer plus you have caps. So that's what we're doing. Well, that's what the motion is.
So what do we cap it at?
And the thousand-foot buffer. Okay, can you reread it so we're all on the same page, please? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Out of problems. And then just so I can make sure, I wanna read this correctly too, with the cultivation centers. As far as placing a cap on that, were we putting a number, or were we gonna allow? How are we, how are we gonna approach that? Because we don't know the number offhand right now.
We need a hard number.
So you have, right next door, you have, uh, there's this, I Like Gardens with Mamagatas. Come, at the end of, what is that, John Daly? Trow Bridge. Yeah, that's the, like, the glass house thing over there. Then you have Brad and, and Abe at the old cabinet shop, what is that, right there?
Wait, what's the next door to the one at Trow Bridge, John Daly?
Trow Bridge and John Daly, then you have Abe, and the best.
That's it, next door?
That's right there. And then you got the one that's all the way at the end of the corner, down there past the two, like, little junkyards. You got the junk car, uh, not the junkyard, the, uh, gra- the garbage truck place.
Is that back there on Southern?
Yep, Southern, there you go, Southern. And then you have, uh, Abe up on, um, Henry Rough and Michigan Avenue. I think he had like, how many licenses he had over there?
They stacked, I don't.
Yeah, stacked a license over there, but I think he got, like, at least three warehouses built right now, currently.
What about the, uh, one where they're doing the, um, oh, I can't think of it, um.
Over on Duney Street, they got the hole in the ground over there. But I don't even think they even done anything.
You have two more applicants in the pipeline that have been approved, so you have this one on Trow Bridge, right next door here.
Oh, yeah, right next door to us.
And then you have, um, Reynolds.
Oh, that's right.
That's where they do the, um. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
You go eight and eight, and we done with it. How many, that's right. But that's the one with the license. Didn't renew?
But their special land use is good for a year.
See, and that's.
So we do not, do we, do we cap, but you can cap it now, though.
Right, I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
They can't come back. It can't come to it no more.
Mr. Mayor, just out of curiosity, when we talk about, like, with these locations, and some of them are stacked, do we wanna, I guess, look at the licensing number itself or the physical location?
The physical location.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'd like to amend my motion then. I'd like to amend my motion to approve the amendment to Title Fifteen, Chapter one fifty-five, Articles Code twenty-nine and one forty-six of the city zoning ordinance with the following additions and removals. Number one, thousand-foot buffers between recreational provisionary centers. Number two, placing a cap on adult-use marijuana retail stores at eight. Number three, removing designated consumption lounge establishment, event organizer, and temporary event uses. Number four, placing a cap on cultivation centers at eight per physical location. Number five, eliminating the green zone. And number six, eliminating education research centers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, moving right into new business, please, city clerk.
The first item for, uh, consideration is approving a special land use for a proposed childcare in the B two Thoroughfare mixed-use district at forty-four thirty-seven Inxter Road.
With your pleasure. Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? Do I need to do a roll call on this?
You do it again.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays?
Ayes have a motion carries.
All right then, moving to the next item, please.
The next item is to consider approval to authorize the administration to approve a contract with All Seasons Underground Construction for the twenty twenty-three Land Service Line Replacements Project in the amount of six hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars plus a fifteen percent contingency of ninety-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars for a total of seven hundred and twenty thousand eighty-four dollars in construction cost.
So move, Mr. Chair.
A second? Move to second, and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Ayes have a motion carries.
Next item for consideration is approval to purchase one vacant parcel. Next item for consideration is approval to purchase one vacant parcel. Case number LD twenty-three dash oh five, located on Notre Dame Street on the south side of the street between Bayhand and Meadowdale Street for fifteen hundred dollars.
So move.
Support.
Second. Moving properly, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries, next item.
Last item, nine D, nine D, is to consider approving special land use for a proposed childcare of seven to twelve children in the R one dash B Single Family Residential District at twenty-six twenty-six zero Stolman Drive.
What's your pleasure? Is there a second?
Are you talking about discussion?
It could be a second for discussion. Second for discussion, Mr. Councilman, did you want to?
Oh, I.
For discussion?
Yes, I was bringing it up for discussion because I know um at the last meeting, we talked about further discussion hearing from, you know, the public. Um, talking with Councilman Williams, you know, at that time, and then I met with the planning department. And we looked at, we talked about a potential public hearing, but we knew that would either cost the city more money. Or not more money, it would cost the city money, or it would cost the applicant more money who already paid for the initial one. Um, and then we've got a lot of different what's that? Well, yeah, different opinions that came from the public. Um, and I, just because this is on public record, I received the email and it was a resident asking that her le- letter, I'm sorry, um, be read. She mentioned that she sent it to us, I guess, before. Um, and I know we have to honor that. Other than that, it was just really an additional opportunity to make sure that we're fair to both sides, the applicant and the residents. So that is why I seconded for discussion. Um, I didn't know if you.
If part of your discussion, would you like to read that? Because we don't necessarily, it's not a public hearing, we don't necessarily have to do that.
Right, okay.
If you want to read it, you can, sir. It's totally up to you.
So to, to City Council, read SLU two six two six zero Stolman Drive. Please deny this application for SLU, which is special land use. Greetings, members of the council. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting due to work obligations, but I am writing this. I'm sorry, I am writing to reiterate my statements from the March meeting. I would like to commend you for your, for the inquisitive questions you posed in your inquiry. Because your questions really spoke to some of the concerns of the neighbors. The neighbors have been there a long time. Their concerns really should weigh heavily in your decision. Mrs. Flurnoy, as of today, does not live in the house. Therefore, she is not aware of the neighborhood. It is not certain if she realizes the amount of retired residents who plan to live out their lives residing on Stolman Drive. The surrounding neighborhood, who don't want their neighborhoods to start turning into a business district. A house in the neighborhood is more than brick and mortar. It is for the enjoyment of residing residents and families, not businesses. Neighbors don't want mechanics to start businesses in their garage factually. A neighbor was ordered to shut down a couple of blocks from Stolman because neighbors don't want this. Neighbors don't want beauty salons, nail salons, nor any of the like stationed within the neighborhood. If you approve this, it opens a can of why is this allowed for some and not others or all. Group homes aren't exception because the people actually do live there. They just need assistance with activities of daily living. And again, there are serious questions about the fitness of a business in this house. It is very small, only nine hundred forty-four square feet. Very small kitchen and living area. It only has one bathroom on the main floor, not aware of any egress in the basement. Parking only on the north side of the street. School bus picks up children just west of this house. Drop off and pickup generally occur five AM to nine AM and three PM to six PM. And also varies throughout the day, as she stated, therefore, all day. It is not fit for a daycare center. Why? Because it was built for a family, not a business. In conclusion, please allow our neighborhoods to continue to be the reason for our purchase, because it is a residential neighborhood. Thank you. That comes from Helene May. And I am just reading simply the email that she sent to the city. And request so.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question.
Please.
Now, did we, the, in times past, did, was this ever approved by the council before? Or did they have one, something like this before, or any, or no?
Somebody sent a resident.
Yeah, that's a resident before. In the past or anything?
I can't speak to whether this was approved in the past in the residential districts, but uh, residential daycares are different classification than a business-type daycare that you just passed at item A. So it's, you know, the size based on that is what's permitted within with special land use within this neighborhood district. So it's, you know, no more than twelve children. That's what kind of allows it to exist in this uh residential area. It's a quasi-residential business.
So this would be precedent if the council sought you?
I, I can't speak to whether it would be precedent, but uh these special land use isn't really, doesn't really regard precedent. It, it regards each case specifically, so it's by a case-by-case review of, it does this meet the special land use requirements?
Council, is that Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I believe we spoke about this, the um last conversation we had on this topic. Um, and how many residents actually complained or did they turn in petitions? How many were there?
There was um, I believe, five members of the public that spoke at the public hearing. And then we received a, you know, a collection of signatures by some of the residents in the area, and there was close to sixty signatures on that petition. And you should have been forwarded that when we had this previous conversation.
In our, in opposition or for?
In opposition.
Oh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, I'd just like to make a statement because I was, I was one that voted, voted against it, but I'm, I'm also one of the ones to go back and do my homework on, on certain issues. Let, let me say this, and I thought about this real good. Okay. Now, if it was an issue about how many, I think, I think that she indicated at the land when she can have up to seven kids. Okay, and.
Seven to twelve. The number is seven to twelve.
Yeah, but I think she indicated, if I asked, I think I asked her, and if I'm, she's back there. I, I, she says she's gonna have about seven. She's, she's entitled to. But she said, you, you told me seven kids. But let, let me say this. If she went, and they're not using her, say, say if another homeowner take the house and go there and make a group home out of it, what residents around here can stop it? Now, now, I'm, I'm just showing you the rules that you got. What resident can stop tough and putting a, a group home over in that area? You see what I'm saying? But these are kids we're talking to. Okay, and then it was once stated by the people that um, bus, the bus come there and, and then, and then I went over there and I looked at it. It's a bu- it's a bus zone there, but it ain't got nothing to do with that house. You see what I'm saying? So I understand people wants to keep, keep their area the way they want it, but sometimes, you know, you know, and I looked at it real heavy because if, if a group home go there right now, I want to put a group home over there, ain't nothing nobody can say. You can fight it. Okay. Something I can do about it, Miss May. Group home, because I got about five on my street I'm trying to get rid of. Okay, so I, and so I look at, these are children. These are children. And uh, may, may, maybe the young lady, she get in there with these children, maybe the children can be bussed over to my, my youth center, you know? I, I noticed something, and I'm, I'm gonna be quiet. I noticed something in this city. Okay. We don't do nothing now, no longer. We don't, no more, we don't do nothing for our children. In this area, we don't even talk about it no more. All we talking about is marijuana places, group homes. You know, s- street activity and stuff like that, you know? But, but uh, I just want to say this. I believe, and the reason why I, I, I changed my vote, because I feel our children need us. And if these adults want to try to help raise these children in a proper way, because you look at it during, during, during the school, oh, they in school anyway. Okay? So I understand when the seniors get over there, got their own private, private houses and things like that, don't want to be bothered with no more kids, but I, I just had to, I had to look at the, the synthetic part of it. You know, and she ain't violating no law, so that's why I changed, that's why I changed, because I know our children need all of us. Not, and, and, and I hope that them, the people that live over there can understand. Even them children that she got, seven or eight or whatever it is, they need them too. They can help. We, we gotta get away from self, being selfish. I mean, I mean, this city has got so selfish. You know, we got to do away with it. And I'm just saying, let, let me get the phone, because I go to freaking.
Go ahead. Okay, the question is being called for.
I have a question that I'd like to ask.
Go ahead.
Is there any type of square footage depending on the number of kids that you have in a home?
So the state determines how many children you can have based off of the square footage. So they'll come in and do an inspection um after they receive our zoning verification and determine how many children she can have. Again, she would be by the land use entitled up to twelve, but that would be state requirement as part of her licensing. There's also additional um, you know, components of the building code that would be required for her to use, like I know there was concern maybe about egress in the basement, but if she wanted to consider that usable space, there would need to be egress um per the building code. So there's kind of two factors at play in terms of determining how much space can be used and then the children per square footage.
Okay, determine, uh, dependent of what this council does, how soon before the state inspects all this stuff to see if she's in compliance, do you know?
My, my understanding is that she would not receive her license for uh being able to open from the state until they came out and determined how many children she could have. So she couldn't open with twelve, and then they would come out and say, oh, wait, you actually just have room for eight. It would be a prerequisite of her being able to open with the amount of children that the state has then designated.
And how do, uh, even though she says, I'm gonna have seven to twelve, how do you determine the actual number? Because it's not open, so there's nothing there. Is there some sort of um roster they have or something as the people who have agreed to leave their children there?
This is, I mean, she would be allowed to have, you know, eight children. I'm sure she has interested clients, but you know, that's not a determinant of her license with the, the state or with our special land use. It's giving her the ability to essentially fill X amount of number of slots.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how these things come into play. How, how you actually know what's happened during this process? And the state uh stays in touch with you?
So this, the state requires from us that we give a zoning verification testifying that she has approval for up to seven to twelve children. After that point, they come in and they, based off of the square footage and the requirements in the home, determine how many children she can actually take care of, based off of their requirements. That's not part of our requirements. Then, that, at that point, she can then take into her care that many children. The state regulatory board, you know, she's licensed, so she has to maintain that license. They have to come out and do periodic inspections, and she has to do all of her reporting requirements with the state. Um, so that's, that's all part of the state regulatory board.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, now, now what, what did, now, can she have six without the special land use?
That's correct.
So she can't have six?
Yes.
Now, is there, I don't know if you would know this, but would there be any additional taxes to the city that's paid from a residential home? That's operating a, a business?
Uh, no, it would not typically affect the assessment of the home.
Okay, but she can operate if she has six. Now, did, did she make mention about why she chose the home daycare instead of a commercial building daycare?
I believe, you know, I, I'll let her speak if I'm representing this inaccurately, but my understanding is that her desire is to eventually build up to a larger daycare, but right now, her ability is just to provide within her home.
That's all.
Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wobley?
Nay.
Councilmember Chisholm?
No.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
The vote is for you.
Motion carries. Moving right into public participation. This brings us to the time of our public participation. We will have the clock on tonight as we're approaching the nine-thirty hour. We're asking that you approach the, if you can call, please state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak to this body. We are still in. All right, that was, that was a lot for us to dismiss. When the chief, when they seen it move, I said, okay, and the fire chief did move, I said, okay, then.
Good afternoon, everyone, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
I'm here on two behabes. One, I want to speak about the parade. Time is winding up, and I hope all councils ready to be in the parade. We got probably about twenty-five applicants right now. So the parade is May twenty-ninth at noon. We're gonna stage from Inkster Road and Cherry Hill. Um, I want to also speak about Derby Day. It's gonna be a fantastic event, and those that don't come will miss a treat. We got live horses gonna come there. You can bet on those horses, just like if you was in Kentucky. Um, we're gonna have dinner. We got a fabulous cater that's gonna be there. And then we're gonna do the hat and the dob contest. So I got a lot of people coming from out of town, and they said they basically bring in their hats on the plane. Uh, then, also, we got the gaming. So those that like to come bring their change to help out Inkster Summer Fest. We're more than welcome to have everyone there. Tickets very, very scarce, so those that don't have tickets, they can see me tonight. Thank you.
What day is that and what time?
That's on May sixth. Time is at four thirty.
And where it's located?
At the New Ice Arena.
Inkster Civic Arena.
Inkster Civic Arena. Well, it's, it's the Inkster Sports Arena, okay. Got a big sign there, very nice sign right off, you can see right off Inkster Road. And the place is, is, is just fabulous in that building.
Yeah, it's very nice, very nice. Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Kilborn? Bonnie?
I hope she heard you.
Bonnie?
Okay, now, seriously.
Just state your name for the record, please, ma'am.
All right, Bonnie Kilborn.
Go ahead.
Hey, you guys were to jump to a conclusion, okay, and we think it's very unfair to what you did to us in the community. The fact that these people came forward to you, and you as the mayor, your job is to protect the community. We have retirees, we have seniors, and now you're allowing a daycare facility to come in. So what do you want everybody to do? Sell their homes? Is that what you want? Do you want to be called Rent-A-City? Because it's coming. Okay, you don't live by us. You don't see our community as a whole. You just let somebody come into our community to run a business, okay? A, we don't know where she's coming from. We don't know what kind of chaos she's gonna create. She cannot even allow to have that many kids in that house. Have any of you even seen the house? Okay, the square footage, because this woman didn't know, is thirty-five feet square footage per child and fifty square feet of footage for a baby under the age of three or six months, okay? But you all just decided, just throw the stuff right in our community. Our community as people. I came to you with the petition just because these people didn't. I came to you with the petition, just because these people didn't show up at the meeting, doesn't mean they didn't care about our community. Okay? And we're livid about it, because you gotta think about the guy that just retired that lives next door. Then you got a woman that wants to bring seven, eight, nine kids in this, at a house that doesn't even fit three or four people. Just like Mr. Tyrone Wheatley told you at the last meeting. She's buying the house on a land contract, hell if she is, he owns the house. Excuse me for getting upset, but this is really upsetting, because not one of you, except Sandra and Steve, stood up for us. And we are the community, not her, not the daycare, we are the community. So, y'all need to think about this, and y'all need to talk about it again, thank you.
Timothy Williams?
Good evening, mayor, council, and citizens. Couple weeks ago, you know, we was having conversation about enough is enough. And I just wanna just, wanna say a few things that I didn't get the chance to say at that time. Now, when I was on council, we talked about marijuana. Mayor, you deduced marijuana to council at that time, you just a citizen at that time. And we molded over and, and decided we was gonna do it. And we had a ordinance that was created by the law firm at that time, and we didn't, we, we liked that, the ordinance at the time. So, what, what we needed was an ordinance. So, we created an ordinance, but I don't know who actually created that ordinance, I believe it was created through the planning commission. So, that ordinance at that time, when we said they had enough was enough, we also sat here and said enough was enough. We had to take a vote on a, a issue, we all sat there and remained quiet, remember that? We sat quiet, and so, motion dropped. Second portion of that motion came up, our mayor at that time turned to David, I'll turn and says. Don't you get, don't they get to choose those nine things in order to, in order to keep it from happening? You just can't say you don't want it? At that time, I felt I was gonna vote who I want to vote. Because the citizens vote for, for, for the council people to be, be there, they didn't vote for the planning commission. And the planning commission at that time had more power than city council did. They put, because of the ordinance that was created, they had more, more power than we did. So, what I'm trying to say now is that, due to the orders y'all get now, see y'all trying to get around it or trying to make it better. But it still needs to be fixed where y'all have the power, council, and not, and not the planning commission. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shelly, welcome, um, hello, mayor, council. I am turning this over to Barbara, cause I didn't think she was coming in, and she don't feel so hot, so I'ma help her out a little. Go ahead, Barbara.
I got the Derby flyer, I don't have the Goodfellas flyer. Mayor, council, uh, and the residents of the city of Inkster. I'm here, uh, representing, uh, Inkster Goodfellas. We are having a spaghetti and, uh, fish fry on next Friday. Starting at eleven AM till four thirty PM. And it will be at the Booker Dozier recreational complex. And our asking donation is fifteen dollars. Uh, we do have flyers with the name, I do have tickets for you, mayor, and everybody else up there. We're having catfish and perch, uh, the two dinners. We have beef and, um, turkey sauce on your spaghetti. So, you can have the beef sauce, or you can have the turkey sauce, we trying to accommodate everybody. Is that it? I think that's it. The dinner includes coleslaw, bread, cake, and we're selling the water and the pop for a dollar each.
What time?
Eleven AM to four thirty. Okay, you want your tickets now?
She left a little bit out. If you wanna get in contact or make your order, please call Barbara Cooper, the president. Her phone number is.
Three one three five zero five one one four zero.
And we do have flyers, so please help the children without Christmas.
Oh, it's takeout too? That's what it really is, is takeout, what if you wanna eat, there you can, we have tables set. No child without a Christmas, that's what we do, we get an early start.
Can we have?
The tickets or the flyers?
Asking special prayer, I go have surgery done on Wednesday on this foot again. And, uh, hopefully, uh, I'll be there, but my leg will be up, um, next week. Gonna get this foot right.
Alright. Gabe Henderson? Gabe Henderson, okay, you're not Gabe Henderson. No, not, no, ma'am. Are you gonna give her your time? Okay, perfect, state your name for the record.
My name is Gracie Lynn Bass.
Go ahead.
I've been in Inkster since, uh, nineteen forty-nine. And I have a very respectable family. I have worked in many daycares, and there never have been, I never worked in a Roddy daycare. And we don't come in their community to disrespect them, because I know how to run a daycare, and so does my daughter. And, um, they're older people, and they, these young girls need daycares. Cause a lot of them leave their kids at home all by theyself, you know, when there's a daycare there. You know, and we, we're not bringing a, a, um, uh, drug house next door to them. We're not bringing, uh, bringing a dispensary next door to them, it's just the daycare. Even if you didn't approve the daycare, I got fifteen grand babies in five grades, and I know they would be there too. You know, but we are respectable, because your mama watched me when my mother was at work. And, um, that's all I have to say.
Okay, yes, ma'am, alright, persons. You got two minutes left.
Hello, family, I'm Gabe Henderson with the Inkster Beautification Committee. Okay, our kickoff is coming, okay, right here, April the twenty-eighth. No, wait, that's, okay, April the twenty-ninth, okay? And I, I made major spot for kickoff, it's gonna be at the Booker Dozier Complex, like I said, that's April the twenty-ninth. And we're gonna have dumpsters at, uh, four locations. As for, and, uh, and the dates, I'm gonna give you the dates, uh, April the twenty-ninth, okay, that's the start. And then, May the twentieth, then we go June the twenty-fourth, July the twenty-ninth, August the twenty-sixth, September the thirtieth, and October the twenty-eighth. And the locations for the dumpsters gonna be Westwood Park, that's Stolman, east of John Daly, Wheatley Park, that's Pen and Beach Daly. Lamone Park, that's at Middle Belk and Pine, and Booker Dozier Rec Complex. Okay, at the kickoff, and, uh, the dates, we're gonna have gloves, we're gonna have, uh, trash bags, and, uh, we have water, and, uh, probably have some, uh. Chips, you know, snacks and stuff like that on those dates. Okay, like I say, beautification, now, maybe extend that title to beautification fumigation. Now, we talking about, you know, the fumes that's coming from the marijuana and all that, you know? There's things could be detected, they're saying that you can detect that fumes and all that, and we can have some, uh, what they call some Febreze in. You know, the first, when that come up, no, seriously, when that odor is detected, we can have a, a special bomb to come up and all. And I, I got a fifty-five gallon Old Spice. Who come up with that, they wanna develop that, you know, I can sell my Old Spice and all, and it could Febreeze the air. When the fumes start coming, no, but seriously, you know how the gas company, they, you know, they infuse, uh, or I niggas, and you know, cause best thing, you don't have no smelling. We can, we can improve some, uh, some Old Spice when that's, you know, that fumes, well, anyway, love y'all, y'all looking good as usual.
What's the, what's the time?
Time?
For the, to be at the beautification?
Oh, see, and I left that out there, nine, nine o'clock.
Nine AM?
Yeah, nine AM, I'm sorry about that.
Right in early, okay.
Nine AM, love y'all.
I'm gonna love you too. Martin?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor.
Good evening.
Residents. Um, my name is Sharon Martin, this is my mother, we are longtime residents of Inkster. And, uh, I want something real simple. I live on Parkwood between Western and Jeffrey. Anybody know that is a racetrack for most people? It's right next by the park where we, it's a school, school, the, the school district with no school, I say that. Beautiful park, we got children, they play ball, and they run across the street, and I just see these jokers, uh, excuse me. I see these people just driving, nice cars, and they flying. Council, just give me some speed bumps, some, 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 I, I put them down myself, if you just give me the authority, you know? We need to look out for our children. The last thing we wanna do is to be on the news, something happened, and that's, that's why we on the news, out of all things. So, I, I don't know what you need done, but I help you, I got, I got some boots on, but, um, I'm just asking for some speed bumps. Through the city, Parkwood between, y'all know.
Especially Parkwood, they fly.
Part, they fly, they, and they, the park is there, and they fly, the children, they run, and you know, children, sometimes children, they don't look that, you know, that.
We do have it on the list.
I just wanna know if we can bump it up on the list.
The bid is, the bid is out right now, though, it has to go through a process, unfortunately, the cities, you know, this government sometimes, you know, should red tape over it. We got a grant that was like two years ago, then we could start spending now, so. So, we just, yeah, it all takes money to do that.
So, we need the Parkwood by the park, cause it's a park, it's a school district.
It's a school district, you got children, they fly.
We have cameras and rings, you know, to show you that they run that, it's even a stop sign, I think it's.
Oh, they run that, yes, what, they run that.
Definitely gonna push some more patrol over in the area for sure.
Yeah, please do.
Over there already.
Thank you.
But, uh, you're, that, when I say the list, not on the list to get it, or say to get it done, but of areas that we've identified as the city council. And, um, police department, of where they should go within the city of Parkwood and all that list.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
The bid is out now to get the work done, so it should be starting soon.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, council.
The actress Richardson?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Quickie. Uh, it's brought to my attention, I see that I'm listed, um, on the Inkster Board of Commissions for.
I'm sorry, uh, it's brought to my attention, I see that my name is listed as being a commission on aging. I had no knowledge of that, even though I know several times I was nominated, and you said that I was on there. But when I talked to the director, she said there was too many people there, and she would see if I can serve. But I never got a call back, so I didn't understand why my name is here.
Yeah, we put you back on there.
Well, I wasn't informed of that.
Yeah, we went through all of that, so I think you and I, we talked about it.
We did, but then I talked to the director, and she said.
Well, yeah, after she talked to us, then we, of course, talked to the attorney, then there's a body, we all agreed that you would stay.
Let, let me. Let, let me just say this, I, I don't have a problem volunteering. I don't, but if I am on, I would like to be notified. In my day, like Tim said, in our day, when you were appointed to a commission, you got a certificate that said certificate of appointment. And it told you that, and then you got a letter telling you when the meetings were, and I never was informed of that. So, I'm just making that plain. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Sabrina, I do not wanna box your last name. Okay, Suzie, please.
Hi, it's my greetings, um, council members and mayor. Um, my name's Sabrina Suzier, I am the, oh, I am the co-founder for Detroit Equestrian Play Therapy. We offer equestrian services to youth and adults and provide horse education. We are in the second year of camp, I am a social worker of twenty-plus years, and I'm also a certified drug abuse counselor. So, basically, I found that working with, um, horses helped work with youth, and helped them to basically overcome their problems. I'm at the completion of the Prosper Us Inkster cohort. And so, I'm here today because I'm looking to develop some type of collaboration with Inkster. And bring the program to this beautiful city. I heard you, council member, talking about the children that you work with. And I also wanted to make mention that, you know, recently, we had an epic event, um, through my group organization. We honored fifteen to twenty horsemen, and they weren't just horsemen, but they were individuals that have been in the field for thirty, forty, fifty years. I have the pleasure of being in the midst of over two hundred, about two hundred years of experience from these individuals who have mentored me. And, uh, Mary Sheffield, uh, provided them with a Spirit of Detroit Award, we gave them an award. Congressman Sri Thanator also came down, flew down specifically for the event and gave them a proclamation. As a matter of fact, one of the honorees is in the house as we speak. But, um, you know, this was groundbreaking, they never, some of them never even got a certificate, so. The premise of that was to give people their flowers while they can smell them. Um, I'm really passionate about what I do, I do have, um, brochures to share with you. And lastly, you know, I just wanna mention that, you know, everybody in my house have to earn they keep. I have four horses, um, the, the smaller horses, Tennessee Walkers, what we use for the camp. I have two Pertrons, they're the draft horses, I mean, they eat like sixty pounds of grain, they, no, forty pounds of grain, sixty pounds of hay. I mean, they eat better than me, and, um, so, you know, in essence, you know, it, it takes a lot. One of them is pregnant, about to give birth, uh, next month, um, you know, my hands are full. But this is just information and education that I would love to have the opportunity to share with not just youth, but, but adults, you know? This is my personal therapy, I'm a suicide survivor, and I also suffered from depression. And, um, the doctor told me, you know, when I went to consult a psychiatrist, hey, take these pills, this will make you feel better. And I told myself, they have got to be another way. And I remember hearing the voice of, uh, Martin Luther King saying, if you can't fly, uh, run, and if you can't run, walk, and if you can't walk, crawl. And by all means, keep moving, and I can say, you know, I, I don't look back, I look forward until today, you know, I kept on moving, and I never had to go back in that, that dark place. I thank you for your time, and when you do get a moment, I would like to share these brochures and hope to be in contact with one or all of you, thank you.
I'm like Ms. Williams gonna be talking to you a little bit too, cause the Derby's popping up, okay, perfect. Hardy Rob?
Good evening, mayor, council. State your name for the record. Excuse me, sir.
State your name for the record.
My name is Hardy Rob, District Two, over there at Birchwood, most beautiful, I, I call it pleasant buildings, that's what I call it. So, I'm up here today just talking about, well, I just wanted to bring some extra concern to my concern, really, which is the. Flow of our gas stations, and the thing that, you know, the things that are going on with the gas station in our neighborhood. We're right down that one mile stretch from Michigan Avenue to Cherry Hill, we have five gas stations. Okay, and it's, uh, you know, the traffic that goes along with those gas stations is unbelievable, that should stay there. You know, and although, you know, some gases are trying to do some things, uh, it's just, do some things to keep traffic down and whatnot, but. Yes, a new gas station down here, BP looks nice and all, and, uh, but we have the one across the street, I don't know what the future plans is for that, because it looks like, like it should be under condemnation. And then, uh, we got, uh, the new one, uh, that just transferred, excuse me, the ownership over here on Avondale. You know, cause they had three different owners there in the last five, six years, and that, that's, that goes to the effect of what. Uh, Ms. Watley was just talking about, far as when the licenses are gone, do the licenses come back? Because, see, folks will have licenses, and they, they do inside trading. You know, they'll trade it to their other, uh, family member, their other cousin or whatnot, but those are, those opportunities not offered to nobody out here in the city. You know, so that's one of my main concerns, we're just really trying to get a, a eye on, on the gas stations, because. Not only got a fire chief could be taking some look at those things, they not, I know in other communities, they have them come out doing, uh, power washing of their blocks. For the gas station, at least once or twice a week, I know I got a short time, but that's something that you can look into. You know, as our fire chief, to look at there, any type of orders, when you have all the gas, it's up, it's spilled, and a drop cigarette could drop, it start a, ignite a whole fire. Those type of things we need to do is. and a drop cigarette could drop, it start a, ignite a whole fire. Those type of things that we need to do is be putting, to make sure that we have it lit, nice, and then gas stations that don't offer any bathrooms for folks. You got kids, the children come on, whatever. The case may be, what other city you know that can't have a bathroom in the gas station? So those things are very important, especially if you wanna be a part of our community. And, uh, you know, hey, God bless y'all all. I'm looking forward to, uh, the big spaghetti thing with my brothers and my sisters and the cleanup. And I'm looking forward, and I thank you all on that Easter egg drop. He's, uh, Marshall drop, it was the most beautiful thing we seen since the, since the summer fest. You know, and I can't wait for that as well. God bless you all, and I love you. Oh, man, don't forget about the Derby, and my wife already got her hat too. My wife got her hat already. She say I gonna have to wear one of them hats? Yes, she will. So I'm looking forward to that on the sixth at the new Inkster Arena, and it's gonna be beautiful. God bless you all.
All right. Moving right along. So your clerk?
I just wanna remind everyone that nominating petitions are due in the clerk's office uh, by four, four o'clock on April twenty fifth.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question for the clerk.
Yes, please.
Uh, now, I know that we, we don't have, uh, the Twin Towers anymore. Everything is over down to the rec center in District Six. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that because we had, uh, District Two. I'm concerned about that because we had such of a high turnout, uh, with the, uh, last election. And I'm, you know, I wanna know, you know, are we gonna get to the Twin Towers back in this upcoming election? Because we don't wanna really disenfranchise our seniors and those who live in the tower. Uh, I know it was moved over, you know, for, for health purposes and what have you. But, um, are we gonna get that facility back open for the voters? Because some of them could only travel, you know, so, so many, so many yards and what have you. And I know we have the absentee ballots and what have you, but a lot of times people don't get a chance to get those. So when are we, or if, um, we want to have the Twin Towers back open for voting?
It's my understanding that Twin Towers was closed down during the pandemic to protect the population that lived in the Twin Towers. To my understanding, the pandemic is not over, and just weighing that, do we protect that most vulnerable population? Or do we keep the voting elsewhere? Uh, if this body wants to see it happen at Twin Towers, I certainly can reopen it. However, there's a risk.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand that, uh, I mean, there's, there's a risk all over, you know, the voting, you know, polls. But I did, you know, have conversation with some of the members that were there and just to, you know, just to poll them and see exactly, you know, if they would want something like that to happen. I can't speak for all the whole tower, uh, but they will be having a meeting on tomorrow. And there may be some more residents that's there at the, the Inkster Housing Commission meeting. But they, they, they suggested to me that they would, would like to come downstairs and, you know, vote. So, you know, I did, I did speak to them, you know, uh, concerning that because it has been concerned in the last election, uh, because it was so, you know, overpopulated at the rec center. And I think that some people didn't even get a chance to, they were turning away from the rec center because it was so, so many people there. So, you know, I definitely want, and that's, and now, those are members that I serve.
If you'd like for the, if you'd like for the Twin Towers to reopen it, just, you guys request it.
Well, I make a motion.
Get it open.
I make a motion that we.
Well, let's, hold on one second. I'm sorry. Election chair.
I am the election chair, David. Do we have to have a meeting on this before they put it to the, put it to the floor, make a motion on it? I mean, it was closed.
Have that a meeting. This body can act, but, you know, there was some thoughts that went into changing it, closing it down. I don't know if you've given the rest of the members a full opportunity to consider the pros and cons of it.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it, but will we have workers that will go over there and work?
We can, we can staff it. It was my concern, well, I thought the concern was the pandemic and exposing our most vulnerable population to it. If that's not the case, it's not going to, uh, we're just moving the precinct back to the Twin Towers. If that's the wish, I mean, we can certainly take it before the, I don't know that it's appropriate right now.
But it's already a motion.
So, so.
Already been seconded.
Mi- mi- Mr. Chair.
So go ahead.
Now, is there, it.
Make her the motion.
I, I don't wanna know to have any laws, and now, is there any laws that are broken, um, by that polling location being moved there? Or, you know, I know that it's, yeah, I mean, it is out of the district, so is there any laws that, that stipulates that? Now, I know we in COVID, and we still are, you know, in COVID, but there are precautions and, um, protections that we can use to mostly protect our, our seniors. And even as they come down, and some, some seniors, now, you got, now, the thing is about this Twin Towers is that it's just not only a senior. There, there are more, uh, folks that's there that, that are not seniors. So some seniors may come down and some seniors may not wanna come down and they just continue on with their absentee ballots. Uh, but you definitely want to make sure that these folks are not disenfranchised, uh, in, in voting, even if they don't have transportation.
Any video?
I just wanna talk about also what he's talking about, uh, you know, cause I, I, she was talking about Times, man. That polling place was moved just like that, okay, went to the recreation complex, and I think it, um, the notice that the people got, you understand, a lot of them was complaining about how they gonna get over to the recreation complex and various things like that, okay? One of the things with issues that we sitting in the meetings over there at, at the Twin Towers, talking with the seniors and a lot of them, you know, and a lot of them in, on, in wheelchairs and, and various things like that, don't have the transportation to get to the recreation department. Okay, so I, I'm, I'm figuring that, uh, I don't know, maybe, okay, Dan, cause you know, you got a lot of people over there in District Six voted at the Twin Towers. Okay, and they was used to going there, voting, voting there, so I'm just saying it, but, uh, the last clerk just told the young guy, go to the recreation complex. Notice I say the past, so, yeah, but I think.
I don't have a dog in the.
You would wanna. You wouldn't wanna go over there, uh, okay, another thing you can do if you don't, you don't believe, that's what they want to go there and meet with them.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilman Chilton.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask. I thought Director Cooper in the Inkster Housing kinda made that abrupt decision. It wasn't, you know, like, we agreed with it because of COVID, but I didn't think.
Part of that decision.
Yeah, I was, oh, I wasn't sure, so that's why.
Yeah.
I was just asking. And, and maybe that's something we could consult them with as well, just to be on the same side and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, before we make a vote. I'm stand by that it was closed.
Change it, all them polling things.
I mean, I, I would remove the motion, but as long as we can connect with them to make sure that, if that's okay with you.
Uh, we are still in the meeting, so I know, make her the motion. Did you say you were gonna remove your motion for now? And then we'll follow it with Inkster Housing?
Yeah, so we can make sure that we on this, all on the same page.
Okay.
You know.
And then you can bring it back.
Yeah, I'll bring it, definitely bring it back.
Okay. Sounds good. Treasure? Anybody else? You, none? Okay, nobody? Okay. Councilwoman Wyatt?
Uh, yes, sir. I'd just like to reiterate my request to be the liaison between our insurance brokers and the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Publicly.
Yes.
Okay, that, that would be it.
You're gonna be that chairperson. I encourage everybody to pick up something like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm looking forward to see what you come up with. All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I would just like to, um, request police presence, um, at Lexington and Wellesley and also Parkwood, so I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, and then one last thing, um, Meadow Lane. Um, I wanted to see if I can get an update, um, from the administration based off of Meadow Lane. Um, I've complained multiple times about incidents happening at this one location. Um, and it's becoming a big issue for the community to the point where, uh, family members, family don't feel comfortable over there in their own home. So I'm trying to figure out what is the course of action, and then what do we plan to do in regards to this location?
Yeah, so we, we're already in the midst of formulating that request for you. Um, and I can just say just right off, um, publicly, we're the legislative body. We make the rules. And then the mayor's office and the administration, of course, we enforce the rules. But then the judge, if we write a ticket for somebody, the judge then turns to the person that basically says what's gonna happen. Now, we've had this particular address in the catchet since February, trying to get a court date. And I'm meeting with the judge. I requested to be with the judge as relates to other issues that we've been dealing with to just make sure that we can have some action. But just to be proactive, um, we contacted directly to the homeowner because this is a rental property. And I believe, AC, you guys are meeting with them tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning at ten AM.
Okay.
And we're gonna, they've already been active in pushing them into the, um, the nuisance abatement program that the city has actively. So we will have some resolution over there.
Okay, if you could just keep me updated, let me know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We can get you to that meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, if I'm available, I'll look at my schedule and I'll be there.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else?
Nope, I am.
Okay. Councilman Shaw?
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of things.
Okay.
Uh, one is, um, do we have a, a update on the developers? We passed the, the ordinance, I mean, motion for the developers to come in and to pick up some of these properties and to develop. Now, I, I know that they were supposed to give us like a six-month type of review or update.
Yep, you got that?
No, I didn't get it.
You, you got, we, me, you talked about that, you, you got that?
No, 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 I'm saying.
We, we all got that. I sent it all, yeah. I sent it all to everybody in the email.
I must have not get it. Could you, could you send?
I'll resend that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you had, you mentioned that before, remember?
Yeah, yeah, I, I did.
We talked about that. You didn't get it either? Nobody got that?
Cause I know you just had a home virus.
I'll make sure I send it.
Yeah, seminar yesterday, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
I'll make sure you send it, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, definitely send that back to me.
With, with, with the actual receipts that I sent it to you guys. Because I know that was something that we talked about, because it was a six-months marker from the time they bought the properties. Six months and you got a whole update with that stuff.
And I do wanna also thank, uh, Ms. Tia Wells. She's in the audience. Uh, she sent me some information about a CDG, CDBG program, a, a special space initiative. And, uh, and I wanna thank the administration and Mr. Safe, I don't know if he's here, uh, for, you know, doing the heavy lifting for me. Uh, and Tia brought the information to me and we tried to see if we can get some, some grants, grant money to, uh, start that initiative. And I wanna say thank you to the administration for doing some of that heavy lifting for us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, and also Ms. Wells, you know, for, 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 for putting me in the game, so to speak. So I wanna thank her for that. And also my fave, to my fave, to my fave, oh, there she is. No, Ms. Triplett, I wanna thank her for, um, the various potholes and things that she has done for me. And I wanna thank her and her staff, the DPS Department, uh, for helping us out in the district. Thank you. And Ms. Mayor, I wa- I, I definitely wanna talk about this. I know the hour is getting late, but we do definitely need to, yeah, I know it is, I know it is. But we do definitely need to talk about, uh, these meters, these water meters. Uh, there's a lot of estimated bills that are going out. And many folks are scared because they, they don't want to get a, a actual bill and it's in, it's, you know, something that just bankrupts them. So I know we talked, you know, I used to remember sitting in the audience hearing about Tim, you know, talking about these estimated bills and also ten years ago about getting new meters, and how much they were and how the council before got so much heat because of those, those meters. We, we ten years old now. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta do something because the city is losing money based on these estimated bills. Now, there are some good folks in the city of Inkster and they'll call me up and say, look, Shaw, I don't want this estimated bill. I wanna pay my actual bill. Uh, so, you know, but you got some folks that may not want the actual bill. But the city is losing money, Mr. Chair. We have to definitely, we have to bring this up. We have to talk about it. We have to look for some money. I know it's gonna be over a million dollars.
It's actually three million. We're already in, um, in talks as it relates to bringing, um, new meters to the city. The problem that we've been having is that the company went out of business and they were overseas. We can't get new parts for them. We've ordered some. I think it was about, what, fifty or so that you have so far? Am I saying that mis- right, Ms. Triplett? Um, and of course, we, we want the same thing because you have straight pipes going into some folks' house where they're not even paying for water. So know that we are actively figuring out a solution, but we have to bring it to you. Number one, with what the solution is going to be, and then number two, how we gonna pay for it? Because it's, it's about three million dollars, um, to do an overhaul, and even as we're looking at changing those out, it's gonna be a cost. Cause we were looking at going in batches and changing them out, you know, based off of the studies that we've done, um, with, uh, GLEVA and the system that we have now, um, currently in seeing where our problem areas are. But we are in the works for that, sir, so you will have that soon.
Yeah, cause I talked to the IT guy and they can't even read the segments.
Yeah, for sure. Oh, it's a mess.
It's a problem.
Oh, no doubt. It's a big problem. Been that way.
So lastly, I wanna give my other favorite, uh, Ms. Triplett. I wanna thank code enforcement for also her help and assisting me as well. I can't forget you. Thank you. That's all I miss you.
All right. Councilman Williams?
Oh, I don't, I don't have, um, any comments at this time.
Okay. Councilman Chilton?
Oh, I, I, I will be bringing the, the, um, uh, signatures and the address of changing the street of our ring.
Okay. I'm good. We're looking forward to that. Councilman Chilton? I was gonna mess with y'all to see I got a whole list of stuff, but nope, have a good night. All right, Mayor, bro tip.
I just have one, I just have one thing. Um, I wanna thank DPS for cleaning out the brush hall that was on John Daly. It looks good. And you guys worked, cause it was, it was a lot of stuff. Now we just need to put this stuff back so nobody can just crawl in and do it.
We got a plan for you. We got a plan coming for you guys.
But thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, cause I called him over the weekend and I rolled down the street and it's taken care of, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. No problem.
All right, that's all I have.
Good. And just for the general public real quick, uh, Saturday, April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, at Booker Dozier, from, uh, nine to one, we will be having an expungement fair, um, hosted by the Attorney General Dana Nesso, uh, Delta Sigma Theta and Lakeshore Legal Aid, um, as it relates to expunagements. So if you know somebody that, uh, needs some help with the expunagements for their records, because of course, those could be barriers, uh, for jobs, homeownership and other things, uh, quality of life issues. Please send them out. Uh, last year, we had over a thousand people show up, uh, at the recreation complex. We were only able to service about half. So we upped, um, the support this year, so we gonna try to be there as, as early and as late as we possibly can. But, um, looking forward to seeing you guys out at the expungement fair, uh, this weekend. It's gonna be a lot of people out, so the council too. Make sure you guys just come out and just touch the Attorney General if you can. Uh, it's the twenty-second, this, this Saturday, from nine, from nine to one PM at the Inkster Recreation Complex, the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. I got it. All right. Yes, ma'am, please.
Wasn't there recently, uh, law pass with the automatic dismissal of certain misdemeanors?
Yeah, I seen it April eleventh.
But it's cer- it's cer- we talking about felonies and all that and stuff.
I'm not saying that's another pass.
Yes, ma'am.
That people may wanna look into.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. If all minds are satisfied, call for the. If all minds are satisfied, call for dismissal.
We'll move to adjourn for second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody want to stay, say nay.
I just shoot up, man.
Yeah, I just break the neck.
I just put them on, I just put them back on.